All right. Good morning, Carroll County. Soggy, soggy Carroll County this morning. But let's look at it glass half full. We could be in New Orleans. So let's, let's keep the positives here. Just good morning to our staff. Good morning to all the citizens across the county that are tuning in. Just a reminder that we are, we being emergency management is on top of the storm as it comes through. And they were, they were being, they were preparing all week. So as always, our folks are always on top of these things and we appreciate that. Did take a direct hit in New Orleans. So when we do our moment of silence after the pledge today, would like to keep all of those folks in our thoughts. There's actually been a loss of life in several of the towns down there. So in, in that area. So we want to keep those in our thoughts. We also want to keep, as we always do, all of those that are on the front lines of this pandemic. We can see second waves is in high gear unfortunately. So a lot of folks are working hard, especially in the healthcare and first responder communities. With that being said, yesterday was National First Responder Day. So we're a day late, but we'd like to give a shout out to all the folks that continue to be on the front lines here. So I don't know whose turn it is over there in, in, in the hearing room this morning. Frazier's pointing to Boucher. I asked Commissioner Boucher if he would certainly lead us in the pledge to the flag. And then we will have our moment of silence.
Thank you very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks everybody very much. With that said, let's jump right into priority Carroll. And I'll go down with my colleagues here. Looks like Commissioner Boucher is frozen at the pledge. I know he's not, because I'm sure he sat back down, but our screens show a frozen. Actually, I could say a lot here, but maybe I'll just let it, maybe I'll just let this go. All right. Yeah. With that being said, until we can unfreeze Commissioner Boucher, I'm going to start with Commissioner Frazier this morning with our priority Carroll. Commissioner Frazier, good morning.
Good morning. It was just a coincidence Boucher got frozen. It had nothing to do with that.
That's right.
Couple of things about priority Carroll. This, I think it was past Sunday, went to the toasting slash blessing of the hounds. I've never been to it before. It was for a fox hunt. They bring the, the hounds and the horses and the riders all together. There's a toast about having a successful and safe hunt. And then there's a blessing again for safety of the, of the hunters and every, and the acts of animals and everybody else involved in it. Never been to it before. It's very unique. I'm glad I was invited. It was, I guess, a true, true Carroll County type of, of event. Also have to say, when I was there, I got a little bit nervous because all the hounds are running around. What's up fine with, there's like, I'm guessing around 25, 30 hounds running around and they're all pretty well behaved. And you got all the people in horseback. But what I remember when I was a boy scout and we were at summer camp, we went horseback riding. And I was told that if you got, if you were behind the horse and the horse didn't know you were behind it, it might kick you. So I'm standing there waiting and this person on the horseback comes up and the horse just starts backing up right toward me. I don't know what to do. I don't want to get kicked. I just went quickly out of the way to the side. I'm looking around, making sure no other horses or dogs around. But I was safe. Everything worked out. I did not get kicked by the horse. But for a moment there, I was a little bit worried. Another thing that happened, I went to the NACO, had their national draft of recycling strategy. We call it one of those zoo meetings that last week. They talked about three main objectives for recycling for this country. The first is reducing contaminants in the recycling stream. We talked about that before. Something goes in the recycling streams, that's supposed to be in there. Sometimes a whole load of recycling has to be thrown away. So talking about how to, to reduce contaminants, meaning through education and, and showing people what to do. Increasing the processing efficiency when you go to the MRFs, make those things work a little bit better. But the third one is, I think the most important, improving the markets for recycling. We realize with markets not in China anymore overseas, we've got to improve markets here in this country in different ways to do that. So those are three objectives for this national recycling strategy. It was only a draft we were talking about, back and forth about a little bit, but I think that they're heading in the right direction, especially when they're looking at improving markets. Because if you don't have a market for recycling, it's not really doing us much good. So I, that's just a good positive way. I think that we were going with that. Very happy about that. One other thing, I know I've been talking for a while, our mask, wearing mask, staying vigilant with this. I just saw the other day, I was either this morning, last night on the news about the countries getting COVID fatigue. And because of that, they're not being as vigilant as they were before. So the letting things slip, not wearing his mask all the time, not having social distancing, distancing as they were before. And you notice the numbers are now going up across this country and Europe and everywhere else. Still have to say vigilant. I know it's not a fun thing to do. And I know it's cumbersome sometimes. And I went voting last night, in person, early voting, I had the mask on the whole time. It wasn't enjoyable, but I thought it was necessary. And so the most everyone in the line with me thought it was as well. Stay vigilant with the mask. That's all I have. Thank you.
So apparently the message that I gave to that horse didn't get entirely all the way through. I gotta do better next time. Commissioner, Commissioner Boucher, good morning.
Thank you. Obviously that horse did not know Dennis was a county commissioner.
I think he did. That was the problem.
Mr. Swam, you have a photos for me here to bring up. On Saturday, I had the honor of doing a battlefield tour with Hogs and Heroes again up Gettysburg. It's a photo of myself with retired Major Jim Hamrick. The organization represents retired and active military, law enforcement, and emergency medical service personnel. And I did a tour with them last month at Antietam. They liked it so much, they decided to do Gettysburg tour. And I mentioned General Buford. I want to give a special thanks to my colleague, Commissioner Ralstein, who has a painting on his office wall of General Buford. And the Colonel educated me about the importance of General Buford being a hero of that battle, being the reconnaissance and cavalry. And I mentioned it to these individuals on this tour. And how that general was instrumental in chasing the Confederates out of Maryland and into Virginia. So I'd like to thank the Colonel for educating me on that. I know a lot about history, but he educated me and I'm very grateful. It was a wonderful tour and these are great people. Advise anyone out there that's in those professions, get in contact with them, be active. They do a lot of community service and are nonprofit. So please support them. Also did a tour. Here we are at the Denali Waste Yard, which the county will be in partnership with this private enterprise starting November 7th. On Saturdays from 7:00 AM to noon, they will receive yard waste. This time of year, you have leaves, limbs, stuff like that. You can drop off. I went down there with Eric Burdine, our deputy director and the bureau chief Cliff Engle, to ensure that they'll have the proper signage and cones. I'm concerned about citizen safety going out there. You see the trucks, heavy equipment running all around. But they assured me that they'll have proper signs and cones for safety. And the entrance to Denali is right next to the gate of the old southern landfill in the county down in Woodbine. It's very easy to get to, just 97, make a right on Hood's Mill and immediately left in the Cabic Road and it'll take you right to it. And we're very grateful that this organization is willing to work with us to receive the yard waste. And if other people remembered in the past, it was just every other Saturday, the county would take yard waste. But now this arrangement will be every Saturday, 7:00 to noon. So this will help take some of the pressure off the northern landfill. And even if you're in a central northern area county, if you want to avoid the lines of the northern landfill and you have yard waste, it might be worth the ride to go down and, and drop it off directly at this facility. So a special thanks to plant manager Ted Sabroski for giving me the tour and staff for arranging it. And on a happy note, I helped judge the Dream Big Union Bridge Scarecrow Contest along with my colleague Steve Wance, Sheriff Dewis, State Secretary Brian D. Leonardo. I always flip through and see some of these photos that, that looks like Mayor Perry Jones has been on duty way too long. They're, they're wonderful. There we got the flood zone, lots of humorous stuff. This is a competition throughout the community. I highly advise people, you get a chance, go up the Union Bridge, see these sites, a lot of funny stuff going on. And patronize the restaurants and the stores up there. They love to see you. Enjoy the, the weekend or the day out. It's a small community. A lot of great stuff going on up there. I'm very, very grateful to someone who works on our staff, Sherri Thompson, who is part of the Dream Big, Big Union Bridge for putting this together. Love that community and they'd sure love to have you up there. So that pretty much wraps it all. I want to give a special thanks also to one of our staff members, Matt Rodriguez, from Public Safety for keeping us as a board updated on the storm management preparedness that Commissioner Wance has mentioned is coming our way. So we have a great staff. Thank you.
Yeah, the Union Bridge, Union Bridge efforts up there were, were quite remarkable. A lot of folks went to a lot of, and that, they really went out with some interesting ideas and it was, it was really cool to see. So kudos to Union Bridge. Commissioner Rastine, good morning.
Morning. Eric, thanks for the shout out, but just want to be clear, General Buford didn't chase. He, he stood on top of that hill, married, and it was fighting for time. He held the advancement. So that, he was supposed to watch them and then kind of back away. He stayed there for the time to allow the Army of the Potomac to come north, but I appreciate the shout out. And he was, to me, a hero of Gettysburg. You know, parroting again what Dennis shared about masks, there is a lot of COVID fatigue out there. I did vote yesterday. I've been on the voting both areas over the last couple of days and really impressed with everyone wearing masks, keeping distance and being patient with very long lines. Very proud to be at Carroll County and seeing how, how much voting is happening. You know, right now as early voting continues through this weekend. We're continuing to rehearse for the AAA bond rating and that'll be conducted on Monday. Look forward to the opportunity to share the value of what Carroll County brings to our Carroll Countyans, to the region, to the state, and with the intent of maintaining that AAA bond rating. Planning and zoning, we have a listening session this evening. That's going to be continuing on. A lot of hard work. Very proud of the planning commission and the work they're doing along with our planning department. We all are receiving a lot of comments from folks of interest in rezoning areas and concerns. The, the importance of, the importance to say right now is decisions have not been made on whether rezoning has occurred or not. Right now it's gathering that information. So folks are concerned that decisions have already been made. They have not. And to me, that is a, a high priority right now to understand the process. Last thing, the resource guide that our citizen services provided is really phenomenal. A lot of really good information. Shout out to Celine, Gina, Leslie in putting this thing together and the entire team over at Citizen Services. A lot of really good information for our community. And that's what I got for this morning. Thanks.
Thanks Ed. Commissioner Weaver, good morning.
Good morning. Trick or treat. You know, this is a weekend, I think we're going to have a lot of, a lot of kids out in communities. Just be safe. Take your time, keep your distance and keep your mask on, of course. But you know, this is going to be an interesting, our first, I guess, holiday, if you want to call it, and season leading in, people are going to be out and commending a little bit more. So, and we're seeing a rise in COVID numbers. So this is, this is a little bit scary, pun intended. The other thing, early voting is I am impressed with the way people are handling it. They are distancing, they're tidling lines, they're doing everything they should be doing. So I am really impressed with that. But most, I guess, the most important message this morning is constituent contact all of us here about the secondary impacts of COVID. And as people are home or in different situations, you realize we do have people in domestic violence situations and situations at home that we really do not have control over. And they get in some, you know, whatever issues going on. We have a lot of help countywide if they know about it. If it's a school age kid, please notify a guidance counselor, tell your teacher, get some help if you need it. If it's, you know, we do have the rate crisis center, call in. If it's not there, we have other places they can go to get help. Call Commissioner. If all else helps, we'll help get people to the right agency to help them. And there's a lot of, even the Human Society and Animal Rights, Animal Angels and all those out there, if it's an animal being, you think abused or whatever, we'll, we'll look into it. So just be aware of the secondary impacts of COVID. Some people are in unfortunate situations and they need to, may need help getting out of it. And yesterday, Commissioner Wance and I attended Corporal Webb retirement. And that was a very nice ceremony to honor a sheriff's deputy that has undergone a lot of pain and suffering to get to this point. And I give him a lot of credit for what he's done. And I think he is the spark plug behind a lot of the revisions we've made to police long-term disability. So that's all I have.
Okay, thanks Dick. Really quickly for me, just a couple of things. Dick, you spoke of Halloween. I've got my Weaver mask all ready to go. Quite frankly, I'm going to scare the living daylights out of everybody. Want to put that on. Also remember that it is daylight savings time, which I don't quite understand, but we still do that. We mess with the clocks. We will be turning the clocks back on Sunday. So from a public safety standpoint, that's a little bit troubling because it's going to be darker in the morning and darker in the evening, especially when folks are still in their commutes and with the schoolchildren and that type of thing. So remind everybody to fall back Sunday and be, be very vigilant when it comes to paying attention as as we get into the darker morning and, and actually late afternoon hours. Couple of you have mentioned voting. I've been in, in almost daily contact with our Board of Elections and Catherine Berry over there, just to get an update. For the most part, it sounds as if they're going off without a hitch. I think the biggest thing in Westminster was parking. They, they were parked, I actually stopped over there the other day. They were parked all the way down Stoner, almost out to Center Street. So Katie has been in constant contact with law enforcement, Sheriff's Department, city police. And you know, I, I think from, from what I understand, it's going really, really well. So Ed, you said it best. Proud that in Carroll County, we haven't had any incidents or, or knucklehead activities. I'll leave it at that. The last thing I have, we're going to hear more about today, and that we participated in a conference call with Secretary Schultz earlier this week. And got the lowdown on the new round of relief funding that's coming our way specifically for restaurants. And that, that because the state funding allows us to do a little bit more with it. And we don't have to have such quite strict parameters. So we're going to hear more about that when we get Jack on here this morning and our economic development aspect will come into play there. So again, let's, let's stay safe, be vigilant out there. Carroll County continues to do a good job and we certainly do appreciate that. Without further ado, I'm going to pass it off to, is Linda on here? Yes. Linda Eisenberg first. Linda had asked if we would recognize Ms. Laura Russell this morning, who was instrumental in our, our census efforts here. So Linda, good morning. As part of Priority Carroll, I'll turn this over to you.
Morning, everyone. Good morning, Commissioner. Yes, thank you so much for having us on Priority Carroll this morning. I wanted to take some time to recognize Laura Russell. She was the county census coordinator. And tomorrow is her last day. It's the end of her census contract. If you recall, gosh, I think almost a year and a half ago, if not longer, we came to the Board of County Commissioners requesting a grant to help us fulfill our obligation for the 2020 census. That grant was an $80,000 grant with a $20,000 in-kind volunteer match. We stopped counting volunteer hours once we get to 120% of the in-kind match. And then the county commissioners, thanking for your continued support, gave us another $20,000 to use towards the census effort. This money was well spent, as you know, and we'll keep touting because we're proud. Carroll County finished again number one, third census in a row for the state of Maryland for our self-response rate. And extremely proud that we were number 24 out of 3,200 counties in the nation. I mean, it's just really incredible, the work that we did, not only as our team within the county office, but the entire Complete Count Committee, which was led by Don Ralph. And so I wanted to take a moment to recognize Laura Russell. She's been with us for 10 months as our census coordinator. And frankly, I could not have done anything without her. She was a force of nature. Her connections in Carroll County to have volunteers and to get these committees organized was just incredible. So Laura, I want to thank you for your service over these past 10 months to Carroll County and wish you all the best wherever your feet land after this journey. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you, everybody.
Do you want to say anything else, Laura? This is your time.
My time? Wow. Okay. I just want to say thank you to everybody for all their support. I think also one of our big successes in Carroll County is how well everybody pitches in, works hard together. And I have to say, we really didn't have anybody say no when we asked them to help out and support us. And particularly the commissioners, you all have been a super round of support and Roberta as well. It's, it's been an interesting ride. I wasn't supposed to be here past June, but with the extension, with the census, I continued on. But it's been a, a great opportunity and I've had a really good time working with everybody and I've learned a lot of new things.
Okay, thanks Linda. We appreciate you being on and Laura, thank you very much for all that you've done in our census efforts here. No pun intended here, but the numbers speak for themselves. So any of my colleagues, anything else for Laura or Linda?
Thanks for participating in the census. It's a real big issue for me with local representation and the finances. So your dedication to the cause is sincerely appreciated by the Commissioner Board.
Okay, Linda, thank, thank you. Can I hear some? Okay, Linda, thank you. Laura, thank you so very much. We truly do appreciate your efforts. Well done. Okay, the last part of Priority Carroll this morning is something that I wanted to put on here. We have a lot to be proud of here in Carroll County. And sometimes there are things that occur that, that could go overlooked. And in this particular instance, I did not want this to go overlooked. So Mr. Art Riley, you're on here this morning. If you would light up your camera, please, sir. Art has the distinct privilege of, of being the international president of the Kiwanis. As most of you, here, let me, you get, you get art live and you get art on a photo here this morning. Dueling arts this morning. So I've known Art and his family for many, many years. And it is quite an honor to have the international president of the Kiwanis from Carroll County. And I wanted to, to say thank you to Art and to recognize Art for all the tremendous work. It, 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 listen, it ain't easy to get to the president's seat in the Kiwanis. And Art has worked incredibly hard to get himself to there. And we all know, at least you should, what, what fantastic resources and what the Kiwanis clubs around the world bring back to, to our, to our citizens. And I wanted to take a moment to allow the international president of the Kiwanis from Westminster to say a few Westminster to say a few words. So, Mr. President, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Lance. And Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to join you this morning. It's a real honor. It's an even greater honor to be President of Kiwanis International and represent the 600,000 members of Kiwanis that are in over 80 nations around the world. As I'm sure you all know, Kiwanis, Lions, and Rotary are the three major, and the three largest service organizations in the world. We, each of us have been celebrating our 100th anniversary over the last few years. And it's also been a great pleasure to work with the presidents of those two organizations on an international basis. For those of you who don't know me, I am a lifelong resident of Westminster. I've been a Kiwanian for 40 years. And I've also participated in Key Club. Kiwanis International is, spends a lot of its effort, resources, time, and effort, and money in developing the character and leadership skills of young people. We sponsor youth organizations from elementary school through college, and also adults, service organization, the Action Club that services adults with learning disabilities. So it's a real honor to represent all the Kiwanis from around the world. It's been a very interesting journey to this point. I took office October the 1st, and will serve until next September the 30th. I try to talk about Westminster and Carroll County whenever the opportunity presents itself as I travel the world. Travel has been a little bit restricted, as you can imagine, over the last few months. But I have had the opportunity to go and see some of the work of Kiwanis in Cambodia, Nepal, and other areas of the world which are underserved. So me and our other fellow service organizations are dedicated to improving the lives of our citizens. I think in today's atmosphere, we are in the midst of trying to reinvent ourselves a little bit of service organizations and how we fit in to our communities, how we can serve our communities, and how we can work together to improve the lives of the citizens of the communities we serve. So over the next 11, 12 months, I'm going to be meeting with our citizens and around the world, seeing how we can expand our services to children around the world. That's the slogan of Kiwanis, serving the children of the world. And one of the frustrating parts about any job is, in my situation, is that a lot of the time and investment, we're not seeing results, because the results occur 20 years down the road. We're working on developing leaders of our youth, and hopefully that will reward and bring dividends to our communities in the years ahead. So through our Key Clubs, Builders Clubs, Kiwanis K-Kids, Circle K International, and Action Club, we're trying to develop leaders for tomorrow, which will benefit our community. So again, thank you for the opportunity. I'd be available to any questions that any commissioners have. But it's a real honor to be from Carroll County and to represent Carroll County around the world.
So just a few short years ago, emphasis on a few short years ago, I happened to be a member of the Key Club at Francis Scott Key High School. And it's an honorable organization. And it, it, as you say, Art, it pays dividends. So again, we don't often get a chance to talk to the International President of the Kiwanis. So I'm going to open it up to my colleagues here. Commissioner Rothstein, I know you had a few words for Art that you wanted to say. So I'll, I'll put you on here first. Commissioner Rothstein.
Yes, sir. So first and foremost, thank you. Thank you for your selfless service in reaching out to the community and the community at large worldwide. It's, it's difficult, I know, especially during these challenging times. I think, I think the, the one question I would have is, what can we do for you? What can we do to help you promote Kiwanis along with the other service organizations in our community, especially during these times? Because, you know, you know, I've been a Lion for a long time. And as you mentioned, you know, they're all service organizations, but they're very difficult to keep the numbers up. So what, what is your biggest challenge that you can ask of us to help you?
I think the biggest thing you can do is refer us and talk positively about the service organizations and theirs, other than just the three big ones, but encourage volunteerism. And, and when people are interested in working with organizations and volunteering in their community, refer them to the service organizations and, and make contact with the leaders of Lions, Rotary, and Kiwanis, and the other organizations, and get them involved. I think that's the biggest thing, that we're there as a resource and for our community in a variety of ways.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And I feel like sometimes people feel like it's too much of a time commitment, and they don't want to take all that time. But it's as much as you put into it is what I've learned. So.
You're exactly right. And most service organizations, you can contribute in many different ways. One, two, three, four hours a month is all it takes to really make a difference.
Okay. And again, congratulations on this honor. And, you know, look forward to hearing more of what the Kiwanis is doing here locally and then also internationally. So thank you.
Thank you. We do locally, I should have mentioned, we, Kiwanis Clubs in Carroll County sponsor our Key Clubs in five of the, of the county high schools. So currently, and they're actually meeting, they're actually meeting virtually, and Kiwanis are trying to mentor those individuals virtually online.
Thanks, Ed. Commissioner.
I can only imagine the time commitment it takes to run an organization that size throughout the world. But I also am a Lion, and I know what it takes just to get those three or four hours a month sometimes in commitment. And I really applaud you for your efforts and what you're doing. This is tremendous. And I just want to add one little thing. Several years ago, you had a bull riding contest to raise funds for the Kiwanis Club downtown. And I happened to win that contest. So I, I wanted to say thank you, but my backside didn't feel the same. But I, I do understand the commitment you have. And I'm glad we have a Carroll County native here representing a worldwide organization. This is quite an honor. And I thank you, Steve, for making this happen today.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I, I think that bull riding thing, I, I happened to be there, and I think they turned it down. I, I think it was rigged, just saying. Anyway, Commissioner Frazier, President Riley is, is in your district. So I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
I was going to mention, I'm, I'm not surprised that you're from District Three, and I appreciate, it's just, it's just the way it is in District Three is all I can say. I would say thank you for all you do as, as a member of the Kiwanis Club, because it's a service organization. And it is an honor to have the president in District Three in Carroll County. And, and thank you again. And Commissioner Lance, I have to ask you, when you're a member of the Key Club, is that like a skeleton key? Because that was a long time ago, buddy.
You, you missed what I said. I said a short time ago, Commissioner Frazier, a short time ago. Commissioner Boucher.
Mr. Riley, such an honor comes once in a lifetime to a community. And your personal leadership and skill has brought that to our community, and we're very much honored. So often, we see the leadership from this community. We also have Mayor Perry Jones out of Union Bridge is the president or mayor of municipal league. So much leadership comes out of our communities. And the nonprofits are so vitally important. And the work you do with inspiring, helping young people develop leadership is paramount to the future successes of this community. So thank you very much for the honor you bring to this county.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioner. If I can just add one more thing, there, Carroll County has actually been the home of three international presidents of international organizations. We've had the International President of JCI from Carroll County a few years ago, and the General Federation of Women's Club, the International President was also from Carroll County. So I think it would be very difficult to find a county who can say that they've had three leaders from international organizations in anywhere around this country. So I think it speaks well of the citizens of Carroll County, the lifestyle we have, and our educational and leadership system we have in this, in the county.
That is tremendous. I did not know that. It must be to Wellwater or something here. So Art.
Thank you for the opportunity to join you this morning. I'm willing to speak to the commissioners or any group at any time.
So Art, we've got your contact information, and I'll be sharing that also with, with everyone here. And, you know, just to put up, to, to put the emphasis here on how important this is, the immediate past president of the Kiwanis Club is from Luxembourg. So, you know, we went, we went from there to Carroll County. So, look, the sacrifices that you've made to get to where you are, Art, we can't say enough. You've been a tremendous pillar in this community for many, many years. So to you, your wife, and to your, to, to your, your, your kids, and grandkids, I, I say congratulations to all of you. And you, sir, will represent us very well and represent the Kiwanis very well. And if there's anything that we can do as a county, you got my number, sir, and I've got yours. So we'll, we'll be, we'll, I know we'll be in contact over the next year. But congratulations to you, and very well done. And again, another, another pillar of our community, putting Carroll County on the map. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Okay. All right. With that being said, anybody else have anything for Priority Carol? All right. With that, as the rain continues to fall this morning, we will move into our typical first agenda item, and that is the updates on COVID. As far as the state directives go, we've already talked about the fact that the governor has put a new round of relief funding in play. And for that, specifically for Carroll County, that means another $1.2 million that will be specifically for our restaurant industry. And I think as we see the weather change and all of the challenges that that brings, I think that's going to be huge for our restaurant industry. So we're going to hear more about that in a little bit. But before we get to that, I'd like to get Ed Singer on here, our, our health, health director here in Carroll, to give us the latest and the latest updates and whatever is happening from his world. So Ed, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. And I've just got a few things that I want to mention to you before I get into providing you the, the, the statistics that I've been providing you on a, on a, on a regular basis. Two things I really want to talk about, I did hear at least a couple of you reference the, the difficulty with the fatigue related to, to COVID and, and folks have, and we've talked about this a number of times, folks are getting tired of, of some of the things that we have to do to keep our community safe and whatnot. And, and didn't want to say, I, I sent to you guys this morning, and there's, there's a couple of studies that, that actually my staff came across and shared with me. We've talked about studies that have shown droplet spread, the effectiveness of masks in limiting droplet spread. And we know that COVID is primarily spread by, by droplets, more so than anything else. I, I think, I, I don't know that there've been documented cases, maybe a couple of documented cases for surface spread. But generally speaking, all the cases of COVID that we're seeing are, are droplet transmission. And that's primarily the way that the disease is spread. But I had not seen up until this point, any studies that compared places with mandatory mask requirements versus places that don't have mandatory mask requirements in place. And there's a couple of studies, one out of Kansas that I sent to you guys this morning, and there's another one out of Tennessee. And both of those studies compare, in, in those states, they're, they're county by county as to whether masks are required and, and, and whether they're not. And, and both of these studies compare, the one compares the actual infection rates and show that the infection rates essentially held steady in those, those places where masks were required and were, were seriously increasing in places where they weren't required. And the study out of Tennessee actually shows that hospitalizations were down in places where, where masks were required and were increasing in places where they weren't. So I want to thank the folks in Carroll County that are, that are wearing masks and doing the right thing and, and are, are in this for the long haul with us, and really appreciate your support. I, I do think the science is, is showing that this is a very important step that we could take in, in limiting the spread of the disease. I know that not everybody likes it. I, I don't like wearing a mask either. It's, it's, it's a little bit uncomfortable, but it's something that I think we're going to have to be used to for a period of time as we, as we get through this pandemic. The other thing that I want to mention before I get into the, to the, to the data presentation is, obviously, schools opened a week and a half ago. And I know there, there, there are a lot of thoughts and, and various thoughts on that whole issue about whether they should, shouldn't have opened, that type of thing. But I, I do want to mention that one of the things, a lot of people want to compare our school systems to what's going on in Pennsylvania and other states. And one of the things that's really been tough, as schools have been open the last week and a half, is, is the whole, we, we in the state of Maryland have adopted a policy statewide, and I really want the public to know this, and the commissioners as well, that is a little bit, well, it's a lot more restrictive than what the CDC information and guidance is out there. And that is, if we have somebody that has symptoms, whether it's a sore throat and congestion, or, or two symptoms that are related to COVID, the state, the Department of Health and the Department of Education have put out a policy that we're supposed to consider those just like we would anybody else who's actually tested positive for, for COVID. And, and it's making things very difficult on the school systems operationally. This is different than anywhere else that I'm aware of in the country. And it's different than what we're doing for contact tracing in the community. It, it is identifying a lot more people as potentially having COVID. And I really think that the number of these folks who, who are PUIs, that, that are actually going to test positive when this is said and done is going to be relatively low. But it is a very protective measure that, that Maryland has suggested that we take. And I just wanted to make you aware that when we're talking about, about this, there, there are some parents that are upset because their kids are being sent home and essentially being asked not to come back to school for 14 days because they've been exposed to somebody that hasn't necessarily had a test. And I also want to encourage parents that if, if your, if your child's been identified as a, as a student that's a PUI, and other people have had to be, been quarantined from school for, for a period of time, to really try to seek that professional medical attention and either have, you know, have the doctor see if there's another diagnosis so that COVID could be ruled out, or have your child tested so we can get, get folks back in school and not unnecessarily have them quarantined away from school. The, the PUI thing's a tough thing that our school system's struggling with, and, and Dr. Lockerden and I have talked about this. I just wanted to make sure it got out there publicly, and people were aware of, of how this is working. I do want to bring up that, you know, we're a week and a half into this, and, and so far, we've not had any outbreaks, any, any transmission in the schools. But we will eventually, you know, there's going to be a case where a teacher or another student's going to have COVID, and, and somebody else is going to catch it from them. But at this point, we've not seen any outbreaks in the schools, any, any transmission from somebody who's, who's come to school sick and then given the disease to somebody else. Now, we have had cases identified and, and whatnot, but we've not had it, we've not seen any transmission, documented transmission in the schools at this point. One of the other things that I want to mention about the schools, it's really tough, is, is the special ed is, is really hard when we talk about trying to do social distancing and, and limiting the ability for transmission. And I've had discussions with folks at the school system. But with, with some of the students, it requires a lot of close contact of a number of different adults. And in those special education settings, if we have somebody that's a, a, a person under, under investigation for COVID, or, or somebody that tests positive for COVID, there are a lot of close contact exposures. And I know these are the folks that are the most important, I, I think, from an education standpoint, to have back in an in-person learning type of situation. But they're, they're also where we're going to have the highest level of potential transmission. So I just wanted to mention some of that this morning. And the other thing is, is that we're working on getting some aggregate data together that we're going to be able to share with the commissioners. I want to make sure that we have it right before we share it with you. I was hoping to have it today on our, on our call. I, I don't feel like I've got the, the, the final product to share with you at this moment, but I'm hoping to have it to you by, by tomorrow or by Monday. And we'll have to be watching trends as to what's happening in our schools as, as things progress over the next, next week or so. And next week would be the first week where I'd expect that we would see any, any results of transmission based on going back to school and any of our statistics. So we, we need to be keeping an eye on those aggregate numbers and, and see what they're telling us as we move forward. So before I get into the presentation, any questions about any of that before we move into the numbers?
Ed, I appreciate the study. I, I just took a look at it from Kansas. Besides all that, it's the law. In Maryland, it is the law to wear masks when we cannot social distance in public facilities. So, you know, to me, as leaders, just again, the focus of abiding by the law and influencing those that should be abiding by it. So, I mean, I, I like the studies, but at this point, that's, that's nice to have. But the fact is, you know, we just need to abide by the law. But the fact is, you know, we just need to abide by the law. So that's all I just wanted to say.
Thanks, Commissioner. And I agree with you. I just think that it's, it's helpful when you can share. I, I've always liked to be able to share with, with people why we're doing what we're doing. You know, we do certain types of enforcement in restaurants. We, we want to explain why we're trying to prevent foodborne illness. And I think with the mask mandate, it's also important to me to be able to share with the public why, why the whole mandatory masking thing is important. So I agree with you. It is required and, and we need to be enforcing it. But it, it's also helpful just to get people on board with understanding why they're doing it.
Oh, absolutely. And I appreciate all you're doing. So thanks.
The only, the only other thing I had, Ed, was, was on the schools. And I remain adamant that I think in, in the interest of being as transparent as we can, that we've got to get some numbers out in whatever manner you're coming up with so that the citizens know what's happening in our school system. That's critically important. So I appreciate your efforts. I know you don't want to do it before it's, it, before it's ready for prime time, and I appreciate your hard work on that. But I would, I would ask that you, you accelerate and get that out as soon as we can. Because again, you and I talked about this back in March, Ed, when we, when we first had that first press conference, when, when we had everyone here. We're not going to get through this unless we've got good communication that includes transparency. And this is a huge part of that. So I'm going to stop preaching about that, but I, I truly think it's important to get that aggregate out there so folks have an idea of what's going on. So, and again, I don't.
I agree with you 100% Commissioner, and, and I will say that, go ahead.
Got no names that are, you know, but do it in the right way. And I'll leave it at that.
Yep. I, I will say that the state's supposed to be working on a dashboard that's going to be consistent county, from county to county as to what we could share. I don't know when that's coming. So we're kind of having to move on on our, on our own at this point. We may be, we're probably the school system that's out there with, with the most kids, I think, you know, percentage wise, back in person and learning. So we're, we're going to be on, on the cutting edge of this, whether, whether, whether we like it or not. I will say, you know, we, we do have the best, some, well, actually, we do have the best numbers in the state over the last couple of weeks. So, you know, it, it's, that, that's an encouraging thing. All right. That said, we'll go ahead and move on to the, to the numbers that we've got. So the, the last, I guess the last three or four weeks, things have been relatively consistent. We've been in the, been in the sixties. We had the week of October 4th, we had 70 cases. I did share with Commissioner Lance yesterday that we, we did have a, an unusual number pop up yesterday. We had 29 new cases reported just yesterday. That brought us to a total for the week of, of 54. So I'm expecting this total case number for, for next week to be higher. You know, I've been asked by a number of people, does that have anything to do with being back in school? Statistically, we don't see anything that's related directly to that at this point. We'll have to see if yesterday was an anomaly or if we, we, we continue to have high case rates over the next few days as to what this week looks like. But 29 was the second highest day that we've had since July. There, there was a date in September where we, where we did have more than 29 community cases reported, but we, we did have a significant number of cases reported yesterday, which did cause me some concern. The, the other thing that's, I think, important, we've been talking about it. And back in August and, and September, I was wondering whether, whether these probable cases were, were really hugely relevant or not or whether they were, were kind of consistent. And, and we, we did see a, a big spike in the probable cases last week. These are cases where people have had rapid tests and had symptoms, but, but have not followed up with a PCR test to confirm it. So last week was the highest number of probable cases that we've seen since, since we started tracking these. And we had 21 probable cases in Carroll County last week. This is just our 14-day rolling average of cases. And our, our deaths, I, I had mentioned last week that we had two weeks, two deaths the week before and a, and a, I had mentioned that the death, it wasn't on the chart, but we had had another community death last week. We haven't had any this week, but there, there were three community deaths in the last two weeks that we've reported. ICU bed usage, this, this chart shows it had been, been relatively good over the last week. I know Garrett told me yesterday, and, and I know he shared also with Commissioner Vance, that their numbers are up a bit this week. They are seeing an increase in, in the number of people who are hospitalized that are either under investigation for, for COVID or are, they've, they've actually, I believe they have three PUIs in the, in, in the ICU right now. And one person that's confirmed COVID that are in the ICU right now. And a, a couple of those folks are on, on ventilators, which is never, never a good thing when we're talking about this disease if they get to the point that they need to be on a ventilator. But so, so the hospital is seeing a bit of an uptick this week, and we'll have to track that and see where that goes as well. I think this community cases by age is, is very interesting. I wanted to just say something about this. And generally nationwide, we're seeing when, when young people go out and participate in, in risky behavior and wind up with high case numbers, what we're seeing is, you know, you see a spiking cases in the, in the younger population. And then there, there's a subsequent spike in cases that seems to happen with the, with the older population. And you can see that very clearly. Last week, our, our, our cases were, were, were kind of down in the younger age groups, but they were way up in our, our older age groups. And, and what we think's happening from a public health perspective is, you know, younger people are going out in the community, whether it's going out to bars or, or going to large gatherings of friends or things of that nature and, and getting COVID. They're coming back and bringing it back to their grandparents or their parents or whatnot. And then those cases are following in a week or two after, after we see the spikes in the, in the younger people. So even though younger people may be less susceptible to adverse health conditions, they are tending to give it to the older people, and we're seeing waves of, of spikes in, in the elderly, the, the older population when the, when the younger people have had spikes that preceded it by two weeks. And we, we put another graph in here this week just to kind of illustrate this a little better. It's a week by week graph, and you can see the, the, the orange line is at eight. 18 to 29 population where we had a big spike in, in the August to September timeframe. We're now seeing higher, higher levels of infection in our 45 to 64 and our, and our 65-plus population over, over the last several weeks. So I just wanted to share that with you, and I think it's important to note that, that, you know, it's all about the, the rates of transmission and who we're getting infected. And, and while, while younger people, again, are, are less susceptible, there are a lot of folks who, who could potentially be more susceptible to serious health conditions that this ultimately gets passed along to. So I think that's it for my, my, whoop, I, I did have hospitalizations that, and deaths that we've been sharing on a, on a regular basis. And hospitalizations by, by week. And as, as I mentioned last time, these are people who are being hospitalized for the first time for, for COVID. And, and that's all I have as far as slides are concerned, and be glad to discuss or, or talk about anything that you all would want to talk about.
Mr. Singer, I've seen the big spike in the younger age bracket severely dropped off. Is there anything that attributes that drop off, and is there something we can learn from that?
I, I, you know, I, I really can't, can't say, Commissioner, I, I, it's, I, I know, you know, sharing the data that we, we've got, and I don't know whether it was around the, the timeframe, the, towards the end of summer and whatnot, that people were gathering a lot more. I mean, we, we've seen, when we look at our data, we've seen that, that most people reported having been at large gatherings or, or family gatherings or, or restaurants or work environments, those people that have, have contracted COVID are reporting that that's, that's the type of places that they've been. So maybe with, with us getting into the fall months, maybe there are not as, as many large gatherings going on or, 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 or large family gatherings. I'm, I'm not sure exactly what's causing that. But, you know, I can only tell you where, where we're seeing that people are contracting it. And, and I can't say how people's behaviors may have changed.
It's a possibility. It'd be nice if we could understand why. All right. Any other questions for Ed?
I, I was wondering about the contact tracing. Is the contract, the contact tracing producing any data that shows where it's being contracted the most, who's spreading it? Is there something we can learn from the science of the contact tracing data that we can utilize in our policies?
Well, I, I just mentioned, Commissioner, that the, the places that we're seeing it most frequently is in, in large gatherings, whether they're indoors or outdoors, restaurants and, and particularly people at work. I, I do have, you know, I could get you some more specific data that we can, we can send you related to that, but that, that's what the contact tracing is showing in general.
Thank you. All right. Anything else for Ed? Well, you're getting off easy today, Singer. I don't know what's going on, but maybe it's the rain.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Yeah, it could be the.
We just have COVID fatigue.
Yeah, right. Okay. All right. If there's nothing else, I will let Ed go here. I know he's busy, so we thank you very much, Ed. You can stick around for this next part if you'd like, in case there's a question that comes up with our relief funding. There might be a question or two here, so if you will, just stick around for the next five minutes or so, and then we'll, we'll roll from there.
I'm sticking around for the hot book presentation as well anyway, so I'll, I'll be, I'll be hanging on and listening, and if you guys need me, I'll be here.
Cool. All right. Thanks. All right. With that said, we're going to, we're going to roll right into our relief fund plan and all aspects of that. And for that, I will say good morning to our county administrator, Roberta Wyndham. And as others come on, she will introduce them. Roberta, good morning.
Morning Commissioners, thank you. So as you alluded to Commissioner Lance, there's, the governor announced last week $250 million of additional relief from the state directly to the counties and some, some of which goes to the counties for distribution and some of which the state will be distributing through their various agencies. A portion of that was $50 million for specifically for restaurant relief. Carol's portion is 1.2 million of that 50 million. If the state based that on the number of restaurants in each jurisdiction. So they took the 50 million, figured out from the State Department of Assessments and Taxation records how many restaurants were in your particular jurisdiction and then sent you, then planned on sending us that amount of money. To that end, economic development has worked on a restaurant relief program. And if I can turn Jack Lyburn's camera on, I would ask at this point that he described that relief program. And then what if you're amenable, Commissioners, to the program? With whatever modifications you want to make, we'll need a motion to do that. And then also a motion to accept the grant award. So we'll first talk about that. This is separate state money, as you said, Commissioners, this is not part of the CRF plan money. This is in addition to that. And as, as a result of being state money, it has a few less strings and a little bit more flexibility for us to help the restaurants who feel our, in most need. So without further ado, Jack, are you there to discuss the restaurant portion first?
Good morning. The, the Maryland Strong Economic Recovery for.
Can you turn on your camera?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
It's on. It's on. It, it's on. I can see him. Yep, we got, we got, we got Jack Lyburn in our faces, okay?
Well, guess what? I win the lottery because I can't.
He's wearing a beautiful, he's wearing a beautiful pink shirt.
No, no, I took my pink shirt off. It's blue. I did coat my hair though.
That's really weird because. I can see the five Commissioners, I can see myself, but Jack and Debbie Standiford are both black squares.
Well, Jack.
Let's see Debbie.
Yep, Jack and Deb are both on here, so. Yep, you need to readjust over there, Wyndham, just saying, so.
What else is new? Okay, well, thank you, Jack. Go ahead, Deb.
All right, Jack, the floor is yours, sir. Go ahead.
The state has come out with a new program this week. It's called Maryland Strong Economic Recovery for Restaurants. Our portion is 1,201,501. So we've been working on a plan, and we've come up with this plan, and hopefully, you know, we can tweak it a little bit. And we're ready to go. The plan, we'd like to release it next Tuesday at 3 o'clock. It's going to be, it's, it's a little bit, we, we use it, we'll be using it for rent utilities, but not to payroll. We didn't, we added rent and utilities on this one. The state has allowed us to do that. The companies would have to be in good standing, of course, you know, with the state and with us. We, we like to use it for restaurants, food trucks, wineries and breweries and the stories this time. We want to, we want to add those to, to it. We would give, our suggestion would be zero to nine employees would be $5,000 and 10 employees up would be $10,000. Yeah. And, and this one, we, we like to kick off on November the 10th at 3 o'clock. If it's a little, it's a little more flexible, it would, it would still be the COVID, but it would, you could use it for rent and utilities, which we didn't do before. But all the restaurants, we had 62 restaurants come in last time. And the, we're adding food trucks. We, we like to add food trucks. We have about a, you know, a handful of food trucks. But the wineries, the four wineries and the breweries and the stories, we'd like to add them this time. But it's a, it's a million 201. So I guess your comments on that, we're, we're ready to go. We're ready to go on that. Now, the, the other, the other part of this is last week, you voted on the rebound for retail. We, that's what we call the rebound for the retail program for 500, $500,000.
I thought we'd do that. So, oh, you go ahead, I guess.
But one at a time in, so they can, you know.
Jack, keep going.
Yeah, one at a time in. You, you made a motion for 500,000, but you also tied in, you tied in the restaurants and retail. We'd like you to take out the, and then your motion to make another motion. You just use it for retail on basically our main streets. They'd have to be in a commercial zone, and from zero to five employees would be $3,000. And six and up would be $5,000. That had to be in good standing. But they, they could all use, they could also use it on this one, flexibility. We can do it for our rent and utilities. And we'd like to start that next, let's see, would be November the 3rd. Let that go out next Tuesday, November the 3rd, and the following week would be the November the 10th on the restaurants. So I, I guess, talk about the, why do you talk about either one you want to talk about? We're ready to go, you know.
To, really, I support pretty much everything you're saying. I didn't think we could use that 500,000 CRF funds for utilities and rent. I thought that was restricted, where we could not use it for that. So I want, I need clarification on that. And then everything else, I mean, I'm, you know, 100% for. I take it everything has to be executed by December 31st or obligated by December 31st, one or the other?
Yes.
Okay. If we need clarification on the CRF, if we, we can use it for leasing and utilities, I didn't think we could.
Well, we, Deb, you want to weigh in on this one?
So Commissioners, it was my understanding that we restricted it, but that other counties were allowing it. We talked about this the other day in our meeting, and so we decided to open it up and allow those expenses for this round. Jack, am I remembering that correct, that other counties? Jack, am I remembering that correct, that other counties had allowed it in their CRF funding?
Quite a few counties did it on the CRF funding, but we did not. But this round, we'd like to do it since other counties have been using it. It's been very successful. And, you know, rent and utilities are, you know, especially rent and utilities are a big financial burden on some of these really small businesses and especially restaurants, too.
Absolutely, and that's a lot of what I've been hearing as well. I applaud all the effort and, yeah, the sooner we get this moving forward, I think the theme that we shared last week, and that is shop and dine locally during the holiday season, that's what this is going to be all about. It's going to allow us to promote small businesses and restaurants in our communities. And as Commissioner Boucher shares, likes to patronize or patron those facilities, big word. So I absolutely agree, you know, in moving forward. My thoughts.
Jack, I might have missed, missed it, but you discussed franchises with regard to the
We are excluding, we are excluding franchises like we did before. But not the eligible franchises.
Jack, when you say in good standing, does that mean that they're following all directives and everything set down from the state, or is that just good standing financially? What does that actually mean?
They would be in good standing with the state, that there's no means against them at the state level, and they paid their state taxes. And at our level would be that they paid their property taxes.
So good standing has nothing to do whether to follow all the directives that are set down by the state, then?
Oh, you, you do have to follow, yes, you do have to follow from the state. You have to follow your annual reports with them.
All right, what I talk about for restaurants, I'll be specific, is that I was at a restaurant the other evening. We have a styrofoam band in the fact right now statewide, and they have styrofoam, big stack of it as you walk in. They hand, they're handing it out left and right like it's like they're cookies. We have got a band in the fact right now. If we're in good standing, I'm all for, for helping out, but if we're going to give out relief money, perhaps they should be following the rules that's set by the state.
Right, the good standing for this purpose is only financial, basically.
Right, I understand it, but then I think we should expand that. To say if you're not following all the directives, and this is the latest directive set down by the state, this is the law from the state, perhaps we shouldn't be offering them any additional relief funding.
Commissioner, I believe that's been modified to some extent. Ed Singer's still here. I don't know if he's listening at the moment.
I already talked to him about it, but go ahead.
I don't know how you police, somebody have to police that, I guess.
Well, the way it's done, the way it's done is it's, it's someone goes, who's in the restaurant or something, and we cause Mr. Singer's office, because it's the Health Department's job to look into this, they, they write a report about it. There's nothing done because of the report, but the report is written. Am I correct when that, Ed?
So if we, if we're, if we're inspecting restaurants, where, where we stand on this right now is, I know we had a discussion about with, with COVID, that we were going to allow folks to use any stocks that they still had left, and we're supposed to be documenting that when we, when we go into the facilities to do our routine inspections with, with facilities have left. I did pass along your concern about that one specific restaurant to, to our inspectors who are going to investigate that and figure out whether they're using existing stocks or whether they're still ordering it, and that's, I guess, a little complicated for us, but we're, we are looking into that and we could, essentially, if you've got applications and you want us to check and see if they are in compliance, at least according to our records, we could do that.
I mean, that is what I'm suggesting.
I'm going to fight back on that.
If I may ask, good standing is
Go ahead, Dick.
Personal property tax, taxes, basically economic paperwork with the state. You know, it doesn't get into the other aspects of that. This is more from, I guess, an income tax point of view is what they consider good standing.
You'd have to follow your income taxes, yes. It's a financial.
Right, I, I, I'm understanding that. I'm just thinking we should expand it. That's my suggestion.
Okay, I'm going to push back on that one because I think that's ridiculous. I've got a lot of nonprofits that have reached out to me. I've got a lot of fire companies. I've got churches that still have styrofoam. And I told them, and through Ed Singer and the Health Department, that they should be allowed to use that stuff up, including our restaurants. Now, if they're ordering cases of styrofoam, okay, that's another thing. But I don't know where you're going to find these people that want to put the styrofoam police badge on their shirt and go out there and try to do this. Our people are maxed out trying to do the things we got to do now. So are we going to hire styrofoam police now? I, I, I'm, I'm kind of unclear here. Is that what we're doing?
Because that's If we hire styrofoam police, they'll just blow away in the wind anyway. But what I'm saying, we are, there's already process in place about how to do this. I'm not saying hiring anybody to go out to any restaurants. We never said that in the first place. And Mr. Singer's already said in the normal course of his duties of inspecting restaurants, they look at this. If they get a complaint or someone calls something in, then it gets looked at. So no one has to hire anybody else to do this. I don't think that we're in a position in Carroll County to decide what laws we're going to file, what laws we're not going to file, they're set down by the state. I don't think even if we were charter government, which we should be, even if we were charter government, we wouldn't have that authority. So we don't have the authority to follow certain laws and not follow laws. So therefore, all I'm saying is that this is now a law that we include this as a, as a prerequisite to getting the relief. If you can't follow all the rules, I don't see why you should get any, any additional funding from us or the state.
Commissioner Fraser, you make some really good points, but I think the point that Commissioner Vance is making, and I thoroughly agree with him on this, is under the exceptional situation we're in, and these restaurants and the nonprofits, as he mentioned, are under tremendous stress over the pandemic and stress upon their resources, and allow them to at least use up their stock.
I, I don't want to cut you off, but I have no problem with that.
Okay.
And that's why, to be honest with you, this is almost a year later. Because this was supposed to go into effect five or six months ago. They, they didn't go into effect then because of COVID. Every restaurant, nonprofit, everybody, they knew it was coming. So they have ample time. I don't know if you need longer than here, and if you have stock that you need to get rid of, I don't have any problem with that. I'm talking about the restaurants that have ordered new stock to come in and are using it. I don't know how many there are. I, I know the ones that I went to, because I did talk to the manager about it, and when I talked to the manager and I get three different reasons why they have certain things there, I can pretty much tell that none of those reasons are real. But anyway, that's all, I'm not saying any additional, but it, it's a law now in Maryland. We're just going to ignore it here in Carroll County, or are we going to do, you know, I guess our due diligence? If people want additional funding from us, and this is money coming in, they should at least follow the role, the laws that are, you know, set by, by the state of Maryland.
You know, I, I appreciate what you're saying. However, I do think that it is apples and oranges, and I think what we should focus on is what's at hand, and that is the dis relief funds. It doesn't take away our responsibility to not ignore the laws and do the best we can with, you know, the restaurants and and folks in abiding by all the laws, but the, the effects of them doing one thing and then not having the ability to have this money, I, I feel is very unfair, and I, I think what we should do is, is finish what we started with the funding and get the money out there and get our businesses, you know, in best good standing as possible. And then come back to them and say, listen, here's the things that we still need you to continue to work towards, and that's abiding by these laws. But no, I, I do not want to slow down this money and go into any restaurant running business.
I'm all for giving the money out. I'm all for everyone getting the money and using it and keeping things afloat. I'm 100% behind that. I'm no way saying that that shouldn't be the way it is. However, I'm not for people doing whatever they want to do, and let's face the facts. The reason that styrofoam is still being used is to save money. So if you're saving money by using styrofoam instead of using the other resources that are out there, then why should you be getting money from us? I'll, I'll stop right there. I know how this is going to go. But if you have a rule or law out there and there's no way to enforce it, or there's no, no, I guess penalty for it, then why bother to have it at all? But go ahead.
All right, if you want to try to put that on the, in the motion, we'll see where that goes, Dennis. Listen, I appreciate the fact that you're so strong minded about the economy and the environmental economy is, is where you're going, and I, and I do appreciate that. But in these unprecedented times, you know, it's almost like the debate we got in last week a little bit about the the inspections and the compliances that we are putting on these places by going there and, and telling them to move their propane heater two, two feet further away from the building, because the code specifically says it's got to be 10 feet or whatever. We got to insert some kind of common sense here in the middle of this pandemic. We just have got to do that, so I, I'm, I, I understand about the styrofoam. I get it. But I, I am not in favor of putting another parameter on an industry that is, is struggling and challenged as it is. So that's my two cents. My question I had, Jack, was why not payroll?
A lot of, lot of, a lot of companies have received, you know, the payroll check. We decided the federal government program. If you, if you put, we, rent utilities are only given five and 10,000. We figured with the winter expenses and with rent and payroll, five and 10,000, they should be able to, you know, they should be able to, in two months, two months worth of payroll. I mean, two months worth of rent and utilities, they should be fine. We can put payroll in there. I mean, there's that.
No, I, I mean, we'd have to, you know, talk about parameters. We'd certainly have to attach some when it comes to payroll, but, you know, I know
Yeah, we'd have to check, we'd have to check all the records again, and they would have to submit, you know, the payroll to us and the W2s and all that, and, you know, it we could, just takes more time, and we'd have to verify it, and then if, if they're not eligible in the payroll, let's say, you know, a lot of them use a lot of part-time people, and, and, you know, we do a full-time equivalence, we'd have to go back and say, no, you can't, and this is first come, first served, too. This isn't like, you know, we, so. No, I think that creates a problem. That creates a problem, you know, checking payrolls.
I, I think, I think it does. I think it would become very cumbersome. My recommendation is we do not include payroll at this point, and we move forward expeditiously on getting these monies out there. You know, both at 1.2 and the 500,000, as Jack, you discussed, and same thing with Commissioner Fraser. I do not disagree. I actually, I absolutely agree with where you want to go and your intent, but I do not believe it should be combined into this. So I'd like to just make the motion that we applied 1.2 million and the $500,000 as, Jack, you described, 1.2 million to the restaurants and the breakdown that you shared, and the 500,000 to the small business retail, as you discussed. I really appreciate the inclusion of food trucks, distilleries, wineries and breweries into this as well, because we have a long ways to go, and I'm sure they're going to be appreciative of that. So that is my motion.
I'll second that. Could we amend it with a memorandum attached? A memorandum attached to the funds that state for the recipients not to buy any more of the styrofoam stock and that it's mandatory, just emphasize the law to them along with the relief fund and to address Commissioner Fraser's issue.
No, I, I think, I, I think we should address that in a separate action.
Then I'll just, I'll just go ahead and second what you stated.
I appreciate the effort, though. I really do. Except for Ross Dean. No.
Okay, I've got a motion and second. The only other question I had was why the, why, why are we waiting an additional week to put this out to our restaurants? These folks are struggling. Is it because you don't have the resources? But we're doing the, we're doing the small business next Tuesday and the restaurants the following Tuesday. That already puts a lot of the restaurants in the middle of November. And till they get this stuff processed, now we're almost pushing up against Thanksgiving for them to get their money. So I'm just wondering why the, why the difference there.
We thought it'd be less confusing, it'd be easier if we did two separate, but we, we can do it. We can set it up. We could do it all next week.
Well, we also don't have the money yet from the state.
Okay, so, so, yeah, Commissioner Vance, I 100% agree with you. My, my recommendation is as soon as it is available, we get it out the door. I don't worry about the confusion. I think you're good enough to separate them and get the word out, but yeah, if we're holding on to money, that's a wrong thing. We should not be holding on to anything. And we should be pushing it to our community as fast as we possibly can in accordance with this motion.
Commissioner, we, we are not holding on to money. We, we do not have the money from this.
No, no, I, I understand. I, I got it. As soon as we got it available, that we push it, and we're prepared to push it out as soon as it becomes available, just as Commissioner Vance, you know, shared. I do not want to slow things down, because there may be confusion.
We have the CRF money. That's, that we can send out, you know, today, but we don't have the, you know, the state money yet. And our turnaround time, it's interesting, our turnaround time is only two weeks on this. We, we had, we had a call with all the state officials, and a couple of the counties said, well, you know, we get our money out in two months. And I'm thinking, two months, it'll be over, but we're, our turnaround time is 10 to 14 days right now. You know, we, we could, this is our sixth round, so we, we kind of have our system down pretty bad, you know, getting the money out.
So we could
Maybe you could start accepting applications right now, but not, of course, you can't put any money out until you get the actual money. But you can start accepting applications for the restaurant money, and then when the money comes in, then you can start getting it out. That way, there's really no lag time at all.
I agree with, finally, I agree with Fraser this morning.
Let's document this timing date, please.
Can we, can we do that? I don't know. Yeah, I don't know what the ETA is on that, on that money. I understand as soon as we sign that, we were, we, we, we were going to get it, so. Jack, can we do that and get the applic-? I'd like to open everything up on the 3rd and let her rip. And then when we get the money, you know, we'll, we'll start sending it out. That's what I'd like to do. Everybody with that? I think, let's open the portal on November the 3rd for all of it.
Absolutely.
Okay, Jack, can you handle that downstairs?
Well, the one, the one thing we got to wait, we're, we're, the application, we haven't, we haven't got the, it hasn't been developed yet with the demographics. We have to get that from the state, but as soon as we get it, you know, we'll try to get it out by next Tuesday, both of them, yes.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on this? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Kind of figured that was going to happen. All right. What else you got, Jack?
There's a tourism side, there's a tourism side to this we didn't talk about.
Jack, before we leave this, I just want to, could you also make a motion to accept, to accept the award? And I, I think we need to be very clear that we are
To accept the grant of 1.201 and change.
All those in favor? Okay. Jack?
I think you do it. I just wanted to make sure we're crystal clear on it. Thanks. Go ahead.
Tourism. Tourism received their annual grant for advertising of $84,399, and it has to be spent by next June. And we've been working on, you've seen some of the ads that we've done, some of the videos that we've done. Now, the governor awarded $2 million last week along with this to, for tourism. We received, we got one of the highest We received, we got one of the highest amounts here, we received 64,304. So tourism has received 148,703. We have to spend by next June. So you're going to probably see some more videos, you'll see more generic advertising, but like I said, 148,703. We have in our budget about 75, 80,000 in our operating fund that we would spend in advertising. So that money's going to come back to the county, and we're going to be pressured, we'll find a way to spend it, but we, like I said, we got to spend 100, roughly 149,000 in in tourism money, and that money will come to us, the 63,000, 64,000 will come to us next week. We've already, we already have received part of the 84,000 already. So just wanted to give you a heads up, too, that there's more money out there, and we'll be, you'll see a lot of advertising out there, and we'll, our focus will be on main streets, you know, shop local, you know, picking up the chamber theme, shop local, do a main streets and and visit, you know, our farm museum and some of our other venues that we have. So that's another, that's another good thing the state has done for us, and you know, we're excited about that.
Are you going to talk about the new slogan we came up with, Jack? District three is the place you want to be?
I was waiting for the money to come. You said you were going to send the money to me, you know. I can, I can tell you that Wans gave me $10, your $5 didn't cut it, you know.
Okay, can this money be used for capital projects?
I don't know, I don't think so. I mean, I didn't, I didn't see that in any, Debbie, I didn't see that for capital projects at all in there.
Because if we can upgrade museum or other venues, that funding, why not?
Oh, for tourism? Or is this the whole?
It's tied to tourism.
We'll check that out. I don't know. I I do not know the answer to that.
I think the grant is very specific about the uses of that funding. I would think capital wouldn't be allowed, but we can review it.
Okay, thanks.
I was wondering if tourism could develop eight different ad campaigns targeting specifically our municipalities and roll those ads, like one week we're highlighting mountain area, another week we're highlighting Manchester, and try to focus on the the things that are in each one of those individual incorporated towns to try to attract people into those, those hearts of the community.
It's a good suggestion. Thank you.
My motto was better Frazier, for fun, come to one.
Took you a while, took you a while.
It took him 10 minutes to figure that one out.
He just paid Jack to keep talking so he could figure it out, right?
Deep score. Uh, you got it. Listen, if you can't laugh through some of this stuff, then you're in deep, you're in deep trouble. So I, you know.
Stay alive, go to five.
Yeah.
District two, we try harder.
All right, anything else, Jack, from your, from your shop downstairs?
Yeah, one, one other thing has something to do with this, but tomorrow night, the farm museum, you know, three to seven, food trucks, free pumpkins for everyone, like, like all the children that come, and we're having balloon, the balloon person's going to be here, free pumpkins and the food trucks. So I know Commissioner Frazier, you you've been out there. I think we have nine food trucks, eight or nine tomorrow. Hopefully, the, you know, the rain will stop and, you know, come out and get your pumpkin and, you know, enjoy the food trucks. And we've, we're averaging over 400 people that have, that have been out there. Yeah, so it's been real successful these four weeks, and it's also no charge to get in to the whole farm museum of the night. I won't answer that question. No, you didn't have to wear your costume.
Commissioner Frazier, what's your favorite food truck?
I had to say, I try a lot of them. I usually get food from one as I walk around, look at the other ones, decide what I'm going to get next.
Do you get ice cream at the end?
I don't eat ice cream.
The cow, the cow is there, by the way, the cow's been very successful.
Love the cow.
So just one last thing regarding the CRF plan. The, the, we, you'll notice if you look at your, your spreadsheet, it's slightly updated. It now includes the 500,000 that you had addition added to economical last week. And it also is updated for the sheriff's evidence system that digital evidence storage system that he has requested that you will hear later today. So it will be modified again next week, depending on your, your decision with regard to that. But those were really the only two changes on the CRF plan.
The sheriff's one is on here, but it has not been approved yet.
Correct.
Okay, just want to make that clear.
All right, anything else for the CRF, other than the fact that we do know that that the work is is underway here at the county office building in reference to the safety enhancements that we're making to our lobby, and I believe the transition has gone quite well. The, the new entrance down there seems to be working very well. So we're, we're thankful for that, too. So all right, anything else on the CRF funding or anything COVID?
Yeah, I'd like to say one thing, and you know, we, when you, when you talk about how much money we've given, I think Roberta and I, it was over $8 million now, I think that's Roberta, we've given to, to, you know, through the CFS and through this restaurant to businesses. And I I just think that, you know, your leadership and giving out $8 million to help the businesses, you know, you, you kept a lot of these companies in business in small, you know, small, and it's talking about home-based businesses, too, you know, that that probably wouldn't be here. You know, we have very few closures, you know, there's probably a handful of closures that, you know, that a lot of them were already planned before this. So I just want to thank you for your leadership on $8 million. It's quite a, you know, quite a lot of money here.
Well, yep, well said, Jack, and as, as we see the, the news conferences that where, where other county officials in other jurisdictions get behind the, the podiums and go rah rah. We and Carol, while we don't get that, while we don't get that regional news conference approach that everyone else seems to get, we're doing better than anybody, and I'll leave it at that. Anything else? All right, thank you, Jack, appreciate it. Thank you, Roberta, and thank you, Deb. Thank you all very much. Okay, with that said, we're going to now roll into the rest of our agenda. And the first, the first item is the consideration of the bond authorizing resolution. It's that time of year, and for that, I will turn it over to our comptroller, Mr. Rob Burke, and he will then introduce those that are going to be involved in this discussion. Mr. Burke, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. As you mentioned, we'll be considering the bond authorizing resolution this morning. I've got a few guests that I asked, it looks like they're coming on here. Jennifer Dirksen is with Davenport and Company, and I believe her colleague Joe Mason may also be on the call. And Mr. Dave Gregory is with McKenon, Shelton and Hen, the county's bond counsel, and he'll be walking you through the resolution after I give it a brief overview. So we are beginning the process for doing a bond issue, that bond issue scheduled for November 19th. We'll, we'll walk through the details, but essentially $20 million in new borrowing. So that will be to cover primarily capital projects that had been in prior years budgets where bond funding was identified to fund those projects. I did include a project list with your briefing. 20 million in total. These are pretty typical county projects as far as infrastructure maintenance and keeping up on things, public works, roads and bridge type projects, a good bit in, in public schools, and particularly 4.7 million or so in the career and tech center replacement project as that got underway this summer. You can look over the list there. So those are all projects that are currently active, have begun the majority of this, or we anticipate something over 9 million or so of the 20 million being refunding, sorry, being reimbursement, meaning we've already spent these dollars. So on the career and tech project, they started this summer, we've already incurred those expenses, and we'll be reimbursing that money to ourselves. We will have a, an opportunity for some refunding, and Jennifer Dirksen will walk us through that here in a few moments. We anticipate issuing those refunding bonds if they produce the savings that we're hopeful. So depending on interest rates, environment we're in now versus where we may be on the 19th, we'll reevaluate that and determine on that date if the refunding makes sense for us at that point. So any questions kind of on that overview? If not, we will begin, maybe I'll ask Jen next to touch on the issue and the refunding opportunity.
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks, Rob. So as Mr. Burke mentioned, the county is looking to refund its 2010 D Babs on a tax exempt basis, as well as its series 2012 and 2013 bonds on a taxable basis. The 2010 D Babs refunding is currently estimated to generate about 1.6 million in gross savings, or about 12.9% net present value savings, and that's well above the 3%, that's the industry benchmark. In addition, looking at the 2012s and 2013s, they're expected to generate another 2.4 million in savings, or about 9.5% net present value. Neither of those, those refundings would have any extensions and maturities. And as Mr. Burke mentioned, this is all subject to market conditions, so we'll continue to monitor the market, you know, as we get through the election and get closer to the sale, and we'll make any adjustments as needed depending on how those refundings look, you know, as we get closer to the 19th of November. I'd be happy to take any questions on that.
Questions for Jen? All right. Go ahead.
Yeah, let me just follow. So in a moment here, Mr. Gregory will walk us through the resolution. The 20 million new money is pretty fixed. We've identified that, that list and that set. The refunding component, you know, based on the estimates that Jen mentioned, we anticipate issuing a certain amount. The resolution will have a little flexibility built into it for a little bit higher of an authorization amount there. You also recall that the 20 million in new money is using state authorization. We, when we go annually to the state to get authorization issue bonds, the 20 million, the new money will use that authorization. Refundings do not, they are actually still using the authorization that was used in their original issuance. Of course, I'll just mention, again, the refunding is dependent on, on market condition, so there's no obligation or commitment to issue those refunding bonds right up until the day of issue or the, or or just before we can eliminate any portion of the refunding issue that we don't think will produce the results that we're hoping for. So with that, I'll ask Mr. Gregory to give an overview of the resolution and then for the board to act on it.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Commissioners, good morning. It is a pleasure to be with you. I'll be in certainly different circumstances than the way we see each other this time of year, but it is great to see you all, and it's a pleasure to be presenting this authorizing resolution, which covers matters that Mr. Burke and Ms. Dirksen presented to you, primarily consisting of a $20 million new money component that Mr. Burke referred to, together with the opportunity for the county to realize savings through refunding opportunities that may be available at the time the bonds go to sale in November. The authorized resolution authorizes the county to distribute a preliminary official statement to market participants that would close information about the, information about this bond transaction and otherwise information that investors and bond market participants need in connection with their making an offer on the bonds on the date of sale. Resolution also authorizes the publication of a notice of sale as required by state law, and also allow Burke and Ms. Dirksen and Mr. Mason and myself to come back before the board on the date of the bond sale to seek authorization from the commissioners to proceed with the bond sale, which may, which may include both the new money component together with the refunding components if market conditions allow that to occur. Are there any questions that I can answer with regard to the authorizing resolution? I should note, it follows its customary form that is presented to the commissioners in connection with the county's bond sales.
All right, any questions for David? Okay, looks like we're, we're getting close here. Anything else, Rob? I've got a couple questions on the project list, but let me know if you're ready for those or not. Is there anything else from, from Jen or David or Joe Mason? It's good to see Joe. Joe actually looks like he's speaking from the space shuttle. I don't know what that is behind him, but I, I don't know where you are, Mason, but you look like you're on the International Space Station. All right, Rob, I, I got a couple of questions on the project list, but, but.
Sure, go ahead with that.
Okay. Two, a couple of things. I see in the general category, some systemic renovations, not only here at the county, but also at Carroll Community College. I know that we have been using a lot of COVID relief funding for some of the systemic renovations. I, I would, I would, would hope that these are not included in here, so as not to have to do the bond when we come up with these renovations. Yes?
Correct. These are projects that were previously budgeted, previously adopted, and had likely had their spending, as I said, prior to even COVID and so forth. So generally, we're reimbursing ourselves on these projects, and we certainly monitor the CRF money in a way that we certainly wouldn't duplicate and have the money in both bond funded and CRF funded. So we've already done that separation.
Okay, in a similar way in which I guess you, I don't guess, I know, when it comes to our conservation and water resource projects, a lot of those, we get grant monies for a good portion of those projects. These are specifically our portion of the spending that occurs when we do these projects.
That's correct. This is our portion, bond funded. There are times where we anticipate that it will be our cost and bond funded, and then as, as the county is able to secure grant funds, we then put the grant onto the project, reduce the amount of bond funding. So this is the net cost that remains that's county funded and anticipated for bond funding.
Okay, and the last question I had, I do not see, and refresh my memory, maybe it was on the previous, the community center that slated for the Union Mill Silver Run area. Was that on a previous project list?
So again, what you're seeing is only the component of any project that is due for bond funding in this bond sale. So either other funds may be expended first on a project, and we haven't gotten to bond funds yet. A given project can certainly span multiple years, so a project like that, you know, might be spending some other component of money now, might show up next year in its bond funding and reimbursement. So again, we do, we are spending potentially other money first, other cash or state money or other grants, usually. Bond funding is usually our last money spent on a project, and again, it can span multiple years. So if there's bond component on that project, you'll see it come likely as construction begins and the dollars start to flow.
Okay, thanks, Rob. Any other questions? That's the last one that I had. Ed?
That, that last comment, projects are not conducted unless we're assured that the money is there. So if we're using, if we're going after, you know, the bond money, we're confident that we're going to be receiving it, correct? Well, what you said makes me believe that we accept projects half-funded and look for funding afterwards, after we're halfway through. That, that, that's not what we do.
No, you're correct. We, when you adopt a budget, you've fully identified the expected revenue sources, the, the funding sources for a given project. They can sometimes change, as we mentioned, from time to time, we anticipate county spending on particularly the conservation projects, and they may be successful in getting a state grant, you know, at some later point, in which case, you know, we will make that adjustment. And I think what I was trying to identify is that generally bonds, the bond component of the funding of the whole project are the, are generally the last dollars that we consider spent. So we generally spend the dollars in, on other funding sources first, and then bonds last. And if the project comes in under budget and we aren't required to spend as much on a project, we would only issue the bonds up to the amount of spending, and any savings generally would be in less bonds issued.
Correct. Okay. No, I, I, I understand. I agree. It's just very important that we, you know, provide the, that message out, because it can be difficult to understand the processes and how we are spending both our money, other people's money, grants, and then also issuing the bonds. Probably the most important thing we do. So I appreciate that. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions for?
That's one of them.
Go ahead, Dick. I'm sorry.
That was one of the most important things we do. But with that, I move the more of the Commissioners, adopt the bond authorizing resolution as presented by the bond council.
Second.
All right. Any other questions or comments for the team that we have on this morning? All right, hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimously approved. Mr. Burke?
Very good. Thank you, Commissioners. We'll keep you updated as we move towards sale. As you're aware, we'll be doing our credit rating presentations on Monday, November 2nd, and after some period of time on their end, when they release the ratings to us, we'll be getting those out to you and the public as well as we move toward the sale. And again, thank you to Mr. Gregory, Ms. Derrickson, and Mr. Mason for joining us this morning, and we'll have them with us again on the date of bond sale.
And Mr. Burke, thanks for your leadership on restructuring the old bond debt to save us money. That was a very good initiative you took. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Combined with savings we secured last year with refunding the 2009 Babs and some others, combined with our estimate here, something close to $9 million in savings, generally realized out over about the next decade, over about 10 years, but significantly, you know, an opportunity to really relieve some, some budget challenges out over the next number of years. So again, it's a team effort with the team you see here today. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jen, Joe, we'll see you later today. Couple of us will, as we continue to get ready for Monday, November the 2nd, in which time both Joe Mason and Jen will be providing me with a, a huge birthday cake as well. Mr. Gregory, we appreciate, we appreciate, as always, you helping us through this. Rob, thank you all, and have a great day, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Hey, Commissioner Weaver, was that a Big Wans Small World type of comment? Just curious.
Chris, Chris Lamb, I need a bigger mute button. Okay, just letting you know. So let's get that bigger mute button. All right. Next on our agenda is the briefing on our 2019 Annual Report from the Department of Planning. And again, we will say hello and good morning to Linda Eisenberg.
Good morning, Commissioners. Today, we're here to present to you the annual planning report. This is a document that is required by the annotated Maryland that we, and the planning commission to prepare, adopt, and file an annual report with the Maryland Department of Planning. We typically do this in July of the following year, but because of COVID, the state granted everyone an extension to the end of October. We have submitted the report. So today is informational briefing. With me is Cody Spade, who prepared the annual planning report document to present to you. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Cody to do the presentation. Cody, we can't hear you.
Reset your audio in the gear wheel on the right, top right. Still hear you. There's a gear wheel on the top right-hand side. You'll see that. And click on that and check your audio input there, microphone input. Sometimes it needs to be refreshed when there's been an update. I hear some?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
My apologies for that. First and foremost, thank you, Linda, and thank you to the Commissioners for your time this morning. As Linda mentioned, normally, we would be giving this presentation sometime in July, but because of the COVID situation, it has been pushed back. So we will be covering the calendar year of 2019. So some of this stuff might seem like ancient history by now. Hopefully, you guys can follow along. As Linda also mentioned, this annual report is required by the state. Number one, just to kind of report on any of the development activity that goes on throughout the county, whether that be site plans approved, water sewer amendments, changes to comprehensive plan, plan amendments, and also number two, to make sure that all those development-related activities are consistent with both our local plans and the state's planning visions, as well as provide a mid-cycle review for our comprehensive plans between their 10-year update period.
Excuse me, Cody, can we get the presentation, or at least the control room to give either Cody or myself access to our screens? Control room?
I think I've got it now.
Cody has presentation.
So yeah, as, as Linda stated, the municipalities have approved their planning report. It also has been approved by our county planning commission as well, and has been sent off and submitted to the state. So this is kind of our final update on what we have provided to the state. We are in the process right now of distributing those final documents to the municipalities, as well as to the public. So as far as the updates provided in this year's report, the 2019 amendment to the Carroll County Master Plan was approved within the calendar year 2019, as well as updates to the Water and Sewer Master Plan and the new 2019 Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan. As I stated before, we are required by the state to update those adoption plans every 10 years. The comprehensive rezoning also took place during the calendar year 2019, and about 1,300 properties were rezoned, with 308 being C1, 602 being C2, 61 being C3, 267 in I1, and 113 in I2. And here is an updated map reflecting those rezonings, as well as the future land use for the county. From a development perspective, from use and occupancy permits that were distributed for residential activity this year, we did see an uptick with 358 use and occupancy permits issued, which has jumped up from the decline we have seen over the past four years. And looking at the same commercial activities through the commercial lens, we have seen an uptick as well, with 37 use and occupancy permits issued during the calendar year 2019. As far as site plans approved, with residential site plans in mind, we've had 18 within the county, five within the municipalities, for a total of 23, totaling 198,000 acres. And within the commercial industrial, we have 16 in the county and 10 within the municipality, for a total of 26 with 307 total acres. In 2019, the existing and potential developable residential lots, I'll, I'll spare you guys me just reading off these numbers off the slide, but as you can see, the existing units that we have within the county, most are within those PFAs and DGAs, with the rest being outside of those, for a total of 64,888 existing units within the county, as well as for the potential lots. You see that most of the potential lots lie outside of the PFA and the DGA, for a total of 25,226 potential residential lots within the county. And here's a graphic showing those residential lots scattered throughout the county. And from a non-residential point of view, we actually look at the existing and potential commercial industrial acreage instead of the lots themselves. And again, you see most of these, most of the acreage coming in inside the PFA and DGA for the existing acreage totaling 4,987. And for the potential developable non-residential acreage, you see most of that also within the PFA and DGA, which is good for both our local and state goals. And here you can see some of those potential non-residential development acreage. As far as ag preservation goes, we've had over 1,500 acres acquired in the calendar year 2019. And since the 1979 goal of 100,000 acres for agricultural use, we have increased to 74,419, about 74% of that goal, and over $6 million were committed to agricultural preservation based off the fiscal year 2019. Here as well is a map showing those agricultural easements, as well with the 2019 being in blue, green, and purple. I'm not going to kind of back and close the roundup of information that we have. I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments that you may have. Thanks.
All right, questions for Cody?
Yeah, as we're predicting land use in the county, you know, you have ag preservation in there at 75,000 acres presently. That gives us about 45,000 acres to get 25,000 preserved to hit that 100,000 goal. Is there land available to easily do that? Because you already, it's about 25,000 acre, 20,000 acre variable in there to make that happen?
Not calculated that number specifically, but my understanding is we do have the acreage within our priority preservation area to achieve that 100,000 acre goal.
Okay, I know it's going to be harder to find those acres, but do you have those areas kind of designated already?
That is something that Land and Resource Management does in the Ag Pres group. I don't believe they have lands prioritized, but that is the idea and intent behind the priority preservation areas, which are already designated, and the rural legacy area, which again, a designated area for protection.
I believe that's something that we need to capture. So whoever is responsible, that's, you know, because it's going to be more and more difficult to find applicable land available for preservation. You know, now, you know, it's, it's almost like we've hit 75,000 acres of the easy stuff. Now comes the more difficult, you know, concerns that we have. So Linda, if you can work with the other teams to capturing that, I think that would be really helpful in our planning efforts.
In fact, that may be something where you really need to start looking at this coming year. Out of that 45,000, where are these 25 going to come from? At least designating those areas. And I would strongly suggest we start to look at, like Commissioner Ross James said, start to really look at where is this going to happen, where are the possibilities?
This is going to have potential competition against other targeted opportunities, especially within the municipalities and the, you know, the, the growth areas to include the Freedom District. So, you know, this is, this is all part of it. So yeah, Commissioner Weaver, I really appreciate you bringing that, that up.
But Linda, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe I'm misunderstanding what you said, but you're, I think what you said is outside the areas that Mr. Rossing just mentioned, we have sufficient acreage to get to 100,000 acres outside of the municipalities and the, and the growth areas. Is that right?
Standing is that we do have sufficient acreage. I mean, Carroll County's over almost 300,000 square acre. So the idea is that 100,000 would be a third of the county in preserve.
And we have that in, in, what is it, what'd you call it, conservation areas already? I mean, it's not, it's not preserved yet in it, but it has potential there. But we have that acreage available outside of our growth areas.
Correct. That is the intent of the preservation area and the two rural legacy areas.
Okay. I, I, so I thought you said, but I was, I didn't want to be confused on it, but okay. And I do think it's.
That's the area that we have the resources from the state to help preserve.
Yeah, I think it's, it's just important at this point to capture it and to, to put it on the map. So we can see out of that 45, because just because it's there doesn't mean it's viable. And I have a concern that we have less and less viable properties to go into preservation to meet our goals. And I'll make sure that we continue to work hard in meeting those goals that we laid out for ourselves. But right now, we don't have it mapped out, or at least it's not.
And Ag Pres, that really is something that is their area of expertise as to what they consider as viable.
Okay, any other questions? All right, hearing none. Cody, thank you for your hard work on that. We appreciate it. Linda, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we now go into the NAPA. The Fleet Management Warehouse Operations is looking to do a National Automotive Parts Association Integrated Business Solutions to manage the parts in inventory through an onsite store. And am I handing this off to you, Doug? Yep, okay. And for that, our deputy director, Doug Brown. Doug, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Wance, and good morning, all of the remaining Commissioners. Thank you for your time this morning. Well, before you hear, as Commissioner Wance alluded, to seek your guidance. Well, before you hear, as Commissioner Wance alluded, to seek your guidance on whether or not the Department of Public Works, specifically Bureau of Fleet Management Warehouse, should enter into contract with the National Automotive Parts Association, otherwise known as NAPA, their integrated business solutions area in that company to manage our parts inventory through an onsite store. Now, just a little bit of history in the past, and first, let me say I do have Keith Vogel. Keith is our bureau chief of warehouse operations and fleet management. He'll be joining me primarily. But also, should you have any questions, we do have our department of management budget, human resources, Bureau of Purchasing, and county attorney listening in, because this is a pretty wide scoping plan. So the history on this was when Keith came into his position some years ago, about three and a half years ago, he was analyzing what we do with our parts and thought that there should be a way that we would be able to increase our efficiency. And I'm going to let him speak to that. So he researched what our available options were. And over the years, this has gone in and out based on staffing and, and funding and how we do things. But we felt this was a good time to reengage. Earlier this year, we did so, looked at all of our numbers, and that's what brings us to you today. So I'm going to pass this off to Keith right now and let him just briefly tell you what he believes moving to the NAPA IBS system will do with regard to the parts in Fleet Management. Keith?
Morning, Commissioners. So what this contract will do for us is it'll free up much-needed space in the parts department through NAPA's inventory management. It will save us money on parts through NAPA and non-NAPA parts discounts. It will increase our productivity of our mechanics through NAPA's eighty-five percent guaranteed parts fill rate. Currently, our fill rate is approximately sixty-five percent. This will also reduce our current costs and liability by no longer carrying our inventory, and it will save the county at least a hundred thousand dollars annually.
Thank you, Keith. So some of the things there that you heard Keith say may, the first thing I can think would come to mind is the fill rate. Commissioners, what that means is that right now, when our mechanics go over to the parts room, only about sixty-five percent of the time does our parts, is parts inventory able to satisfy what they need? They, that they can walk away with it, resume the job, and get things done. The remaining portion of the time, we have to order it in, get it from a place like NAPA or other parts store. And then that ties up not only the mechanic, but also the space, because typically the vehicles are taken apart. You can't move them in and out, and all of that is precious to us. So certainly, there are a number of soft items and hard carst items that are in this. And you've heard a lot of the positives, but it is an obligation of mine to bring to your attention that along with the positives, also, the other issue that is out there is that if we went with the NAPA, if we go with the NAPA, as we suggested to you today, that also part of our cost savings is there are two parts clerk positions currently in the county. One of those is vacant and has been for some time, and the other one is filled. So that is part of the decision that we make today that that would not be an obligation of the county, because NAPA brings on their own employee as part of this store. So I'm going to pause there for a second unless, Commissioner Wance, you want me to take it right into cost, or if you have any questions at this moment?
I noticed there's a line that states there's physical security modifications. What exactly is that? Does it require additional capital to do so?
So I don't have an exact cost for you. All that is, if you pin out, and I know you have, Commissioner Boucher, and most of you, I believe, have, we have currently in our warehouse that green looks like a chain link fence, for lack of something better. It simply has a steel bar on the top and a steel bar on the bottom. But NAPA becomes responsible for their own inventory. We would simply need to add about a hundred feet of that as our approximation and put one of those key locks on that you see. No studs, no trusses, no electrical wiring. It simply creates a warehouse cage, for lack of a better term, that ensures the inventory that they are now, that they would now control and be responsible for is secure. So that they, they care about what they count, and they don't want to lose that inventory. It would be their responsibility. It's all on them at that point. That's what that means. I don't have an exact cost pinned down, but I can tell you, because we had a go and I researched that until we received your direction. But it, all intents and purposes, in talking with our facilities management, it would simply be the purchase of the fencing itself and installed by our employees. And in talking with management budget, it would be covered within our existing budget. We don't believe it would cost anything extra at all to do that.
Thank you very much.
I know a lot of large companies are coming and doing this, offering parts on demand or right there into your own facility and keeping them stopped, keeping those parts in. Now, they're going to put their own personnel into here to manage this, correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, what happens in a snowstorm situation, emergency? You need to get some parts, you need to get access to this, and their people weren't there. What happens?
Keith, if you could answer that, because we've gone in depth. So if you give the commissioner what we found out.
Their people will be here during this storm or when we need them. We do work twenty-four hours. I made sure I brought up this issue. They said they could pull from another location to cover the other twelve hours. The person who would be here would be twelve-hour shift. They would also give us the cage, so should something arise, if you get sick, accidents happen, if their employee was late or unable to show up later, we would have access.
Okay. Now, I know this gives a monopoly to whatever company you deal with, for Carroll County has to deal with them. And I've seen some of the other companies, they have a, they do great for just several years, then all of a sudden, the prices start going up on their items coming in. What kind of guarantee do we have that, you know, we are going to get a substantial benefit over a long period of time on something like this?
They're offering us an additional thirty percent discount on NAPA parts. They also say they can usually save us money on other parts like tires, because they have national contracts, whereas we have a state contract. But we are free to buy from whoever we need to purchase from. They're proposing a split of sixty percent NAPA and forty percent other. But as you know, we have John Deere, we have all types of brands. So they are able to buy from Finch, they're able to buy from Kraus Ford. Wherever we need to get that part from, we can get that part from. And when they buy them from an outside vendor, they sell them to us at their cost. They don't mark it up at all.
I appreciate that sixty-forty split, but I, I don't believe we should put any numbers towards it and not be exclusive, you know, or create any exclusivity with any sort of expectations of a percentage split.
That was a proposed number for their budgetary figures, but we definitely don't have to stick to that.
How long is this contract for?
So the contract out is, and I've got Mike on here. Mike, can you ring in after your review on that?
Mike, we're not hearing you, even though you need to go check your microphone up there under the gear wheel. Top right-hand side. Still don't hear you.
Is that a blessing?
Your flag looks wonderful. Did you find that gear wheel up there on the right-hand side? Make sure it has the correct input setting. Still not hearing you.
While he's getting squared away here, what other counties and municipalities are using this service?
I spoke with, they're using it Southwest, BWI. I spoke to, I'm flipping through my notes. The town of Cary, North Carolina, the city of Roanoke, and three or four others whose names I will have for you in a minute. I don't know all the municipalities who are using them, but I did check references of five or six.
Hey, Mike, do we have you yet?
How about now?
Yep, we got you. Go ahead.
That'll be great. All right. So yeah, this NAPA contract is a contract we're currently using. We renew it year to year, but it is a national contract that we are currently using. So it's nothing, not something new to us. So at the end of each year, we can determine, or at any point during the contract in the year, we can determine if this is not working, we can terminate the contract. So we're not locked in. It's just kind of a year-to-year renewal at this point.
Okay, now I'm on. That was the reason for me asking the question. If it's a short contract, then it's not, is, is, I guess, a dangerous step, as if it's a multi-year contract. If it's a year-to-year contract, we're going into this, it works out well, we renew it. It's not a big deal. If it's not working out, we don't like what's going on, it's very easy not to renew it. If it's a year-to-year contract, that's exactly what it is. So we're not taking a big leap of faith here. We're just taking a short step that looks like it would benefit the county. And if it doesn't, it's a year-to-year contract.
And any other questions for Mike? All right, Doug, back to you. Hold it.
Twenty-five thousand dollar funding. Where is the twenty-five thousand funding coming from? Is it already in your budget, Keith, or is this additional?
So the twenty-five thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars, Commissioner, that you're speaking to is the, and I'll go over the numbers just a little bit. That, that is a one-time plug-in to AssetWorks. We already use AssetWorks here in the county. They're already under contract with us. So we would add that fund, and what that does is that allows our mechanics, all of our mechanics today already have tablets. When they're working on vehicle one, two, three, four, they go out to that vehicle, and today, they put in their information, but they manually then go over to the parts room and say, I need this, or I need this, or I need that. This fully automates the system, so that when they say, I need an oil filter, a fan belt, a this, a that, or the other, it automatically goes into that portion. Now, exactly where it's going to come from, Management and Budget Director Zaleski and his team are on here. But what they have told me is that they're comfortable that the funds are in our existing budget and would be handled, and they would, they wouldn't have no other need for outside funding. I can't tell you what specific account. I can tell you it's already in the existing budget.
Hey, Doug.
And then I'll address the other portion, which is the cost. Everybody wants to know, well, what's, what's the NAPA cost? So the NAPA for, for the year is a hundred and sixty-two to eighteen forty, a hundred and sixty-two thousand two hundred and eighteen forty. However, that is paid for with the hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, a hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars that we already do business in, in parts. So that cost is taken care of there with some additional funding that is to the good of the county. And then the remaining over one hundred thousand dollars is obviously in salary savings from the ongoing parts clerk positions. Those are the numbers. And that, those are the things that would be required for us to do this. And again, that's if you choose to have us continue on this path. So I'll open it back up to you all for anything additional, Commissioner Wance.
I will tell you, similar type things work very well for efficiency. You have the part when you need it. It's always restocked. You don't have to take time and effort to do that. You don't have to be sending somebody for parts here or there. They will handle that. Efficiency-wise, it works great, what I've seen in, in this type of method so far. So I commend you for looking to save money all the time. It does lock us into one vendor, but everybody pretty much locks into one vendor. I don't care what business you're in out here. You don't have, you don't go pricing out everything. This is an efficiency-type thing, especially for your mechanics. So I'm not opposed to it.
Commissioner, just to mention, and Keith can chime in, we will not stop looking for parts differences as well. If we can purchase something from a different vendor, we will do it. And we already know that there are certain things that NAPA does not provide. For example, they typically are not big into snowplows. So our snowplow blades, our other things with regard to that, they'll come from the vendor that we choose. And quite frankly, will, anything that we want will come from a vendor we choose. I would not let us get locked into somebody telling us what we had to have, nor would Keith if it's not working for us. We simply, as you said, and I can't take any, it's Keith looking at this to try to gain efficiency and maximize the operation of his folks and the county's savings. It's, that's what we're looking at very simply, without costing us any ability to do what we need to do.
I will say that in my industry, I've seen some similar, similar utilized very successfully hardware. You know, a company doesn't want to hold a whole lot of stock in nuts and bolts, and a vendor will come in and stock them with an inventory that they don't have to pay for. But every month or so, they go through and audit how much has been consumed and then bill the customer for what's utilized. So I've seen this utilized quite successfully. So I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, me too. I have a question about the two positions. One position you said is not filled. I'm talking about our positions now. One position is not filled, don't have to worry about that. But the other person that's got a position right now, the parts clerk, is that person going to be retiring? Are we going to use that person to fill another slot that we have an opening for? What's going to happen to that person?
So myself and Director Frock have, have met with that person, and I'd asked Director Frock to come on. I know she's on, because I knew you would have those questions. And obviously, that falls in HR's purview, so we'll let her comment on that.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, that, that second position is currently filled. We have talked to the current employee. She is well aware that this is happening. It would be a layoff. However, she can apply for other positions for which she is qualified and will receive preference in interviews for the first year after the layoff.
They're in the county right now. If she, if she chooses to do that, and she chooses to apply for them?
Correct.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I moved that the Board of Commissioners authorize the Department of Public Works to contract with NAPA Auto Parts Government Fleet increase the asset work contract by a one-time amount of twenty-five thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars for a NAPA hub interface module and make the physical security modifications.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and second. My only question is, Dennis, I think you alluded to this before, but this is for a year. Is that correct?
Commissioner, it can, the contract, as Mike said, is renewed on an annual basis. But if we have issues with the contract, again, he stated that we can stop it at any time. But yes, an annual renewal is there. And Mike, I see you got.
No, just to say, while it renews annually, we can get, the county can get out at any time. If we have any problems, six months down the road, we can get out of the contract and go back to what we were doing or look for another option.
Okay, and I only ask that because while I certainly do see that this could be incredibly beneficial to cost savings here, it's a huge change in what we've been accustomed to. So I want to be able to have that flexibility if something wouldn't pan out by moving in this direction. That's the only reason I'm asking that. I applaud the hard work and the cost-saving measures and the cost-saving. cost-saving thoughts that you all did to do this. And I look at this as coming into the 21st century here. And I think that's, I think that's, that's, that's a good thing. Any other questions or comments for the team here on this particular direction?
I just want to commend staff for looking at this thing in a business sense, which is I, I always advocate that, and this is precisely what you're doing. And if Mr. Brown, Mr. Rowell would like, arrange for me to come out. I'd like to physically see alterations, what's going to take place. Maybe Commissioner Fraser wants to come out with me.
She's not suggesting a tour, are you?
Yeah, I'll do a tour of Commissioner Fraser. But I'd like to physically see how this impacts your facility. So if you can arrange that, I'd appreciate it.
We will contact Nicole and take care of that.
Appreciate it. I'll try to.
All right, I've got a motion and second. All those in favor? All right, unanimously approved. Good luck and we'll see where we are. I, I'd like to suggest that perhaps when you begin this, that within about four months or so, that you come back and give us a progress report.
Yes, sir. We'll be done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time today and have a great rest of your day.
Okay. All right. Hampstead wastewater treatment plant, sampling, testing and reporting services. Mike Myers, good morning again.
Morning commissioners. Now we'd like to request your approval to award a contract to Maryland Environmental Service in the amount of thirty thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars for a sampling and testing, testing services for the Hampstead wastewater treatment plant.
Good morning commissioners. As, as Mike just said, the Bureau is requesting approval to award a contract for sampling, testing and reporting services for the Hampstead wastewater treatment plants affluent discharge to Maryland Environmental Service, otherwise known as M E S. The M E S does provide similar services for dozens of other water and wastewater plants throughout the, the state, including the county's own Freedom Water Treatment Plant and the state's Freedom Wastewater Treatment Plant. The county has new services for the water freedom plant since two thousand and eighteen with very, very good results. M E S has dedicated staff for these services and is very familiar with Maryland Department of the Environment's mandated testing and reporting requirements. M E S has and will ensure that all testing parameters and reporting tasks meet or exceed these requirements. And importantly, the scope of work also includes assistance with the, with the renewal of the plant's N D E discharge permit, which is due to start that renewal process in 2021. From, from an economic standpoint, with, with the volume of testing that M E S does throughout the state, the unit costs for lab fees are considerably lower than we, that we currently have access to via our own term contract. And finally, as the board is aware, the Hampstead facility is in the final leg of the E N R upgrade project with construction activities scheduled for completion next May. At this point in time, the, the wastewater treatment staff is fully immersed in learning and understanding the operational aspects of the new facility and, and equipment. It's, it's a complete overhaul. Everything has changed. The only thing that's basically stayed the same is the dirty water coming in and clean water going out. So the, the, the training aspects will, will continue for an extended period of time. The award of this contract will most definitely allow staff to focus on the operation and the challenges for the upgraded plant. Any questions?
They have been presently monitoring this site, haven't they, in the past, or at least the Black and Decker site prior to coming onboard?
Yes, sir. There, there, there is testing going on at, at the facility right now. The, the challenge that we have, the reporting aspect is done monthly. We tend to reinvent the wheel each month. The, the, the M E S folks, as I said previously, have dedicated staff that specialize in, in, in these work tasks. Based on the experiences that we've had with the water treatment plant, things tend to flow very nicely with, with using them.
Anybody other than M E S do this?
I'm sure there, there are Commissioner Lance. We, we currently have a term contract. We, we have access to a term contract with M E S. And their prices are, are, are very, very good prices.
Okay.
Yeah, like, like Davey said, their prices are very competitive. You're not going to beat their prices. And in the past, when we've used others, they just, the reporting was a challenge for them. M E S has a lot of expertise in the reporting and experience with it. So it's, it's really a much better deal for the county. We've had a lot of trouble in the past not using M E S.
Mr. Walker, does this discharge ultimately wind up in a liberty watershed?
When the new plant comes onboard, currently the flow goes 100% to Piney Run. And it's not the southern Piney Run. It's the, it's the northeastern Piney Run that, that immediately goes into Baltimore County. With the, with the permitting aspects in place, when, when the new plant comes fully online, approximately half of the discharge will, will, will be sent to Deep Run, which is behind the former Black and Decker site. That ultimately makes its way to, to the reservoir. It's, it's a very, you know, long track through the county, but yes, it does end up in the reservoir ultimately.
Right, thank you. So it's very critical that we monitor this.
Absolutely. It, it, it's mandated.
I was guaranteed earlier, or not quite guaranteed, that the water quality would be better than what it has been in the past going into these streams. And I offered the guys at that time to take the first sip of water out of a glass coming out of this. They said it was so good. And I didn't get any offers on it. So that scares me. Would you guys want to guarantee this quality?
I would, the quality will be very good. As a matter of fact, the quality improvements are, are remarkable already with the plant partially being online. But as far as taking that first sip of water, not a chance. That's just, let's go through the Freedom Water Treatment Plant first for, for process.
Okay, okay. With that, we award the Commissioners award a contract to affluent sampling, lab testing and reporting services of the Hampstead wastewater treatment plant to Maryland Environmental Service in the amount of thirty thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars.
Second.
What's the term contract on this? Mike?
Well, this is another term contract that runs annually. It's year to year.
Okay, got it. Thank you. All right, any other questions? All those in favor? Unanimously approved. Thank you, Andy. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Roof replacement and restoration at the Kessler Building. Our senior buyer, Maureen Dunn, is first, and then we'll hear from Justin. Maureen, good morning.
Good morning. We're here to ask your approval to award a contract for the installation of a roof replacement at the Kessler Building to Garland D B S in the amount of six hundred and eighty-eight thousand fifty-five dollars. Garland D B S Incorporated was awarded a competitively solicited contract from Omni Partners, which was previously U.S. Communities. And Apex Construction out of Silver Spring, Maryland is an authorized agent of Garland and will be performing the work. And on the background of the project, I'll turn it over to Justin.
Morning commissioners. The Kessler Building is currently occupied jointly by the Board of Education and Carroll County Government. The replacement roof consists of a ballast E P D M area and a modified buildup roof area. The E P D M roof is roughly thirteen thousand square feet and the buildup roof is roughly forty-four thousand square feet. They were both installed in the early nineties, which is putting us to their limits, roughly thirty, thirty years old. With the, the experience we're having in this facility, leaks throughout the area, which is doing some damage to the building. So it is definitely time to get this roof replaced. The new roof will be warranted for 30 years under the Garland D B S warranty. Garland and D B S has done many of our roofs throughout the county and the county stands behind their work and we stand behind D B S. What questions may you have regarding this project commissioners?
Mr. McGonale, is this a warehouse? How's the building being utilized by us?
Yeah, what this is, commissioners, the Board of Education is using it as a warehouse and also their I T department in warehouse. There are a lot of supplies in there. And Carroll County Government is also using half the building for our warehouse as well to supply our snow equipment in the summer and our summer equipment in the winter time.
A question, I guess last time I took a tour of the building, Commissioner Bouchet, you might want to add that to your list. Do we really need the building? I mean, we're present time, you know, and the school system has surplus space to store their materials elsewhere. Do we need to keep this?
Yeah, with the limited space throughout the county, we're always looking for space commissioners to, to, for storage or whatever have you. The structure of the building is, is in good shape. Sprinkler systems all been replaced. The fire alarm system's been replaced. We're up to code. Last thing to put on this building would be the roof and we got ourselves a perfectly good building here at Carroll County.
Yeah, there was a point, Dick, that I agreed with you because, you know, the, the couple of times I've been out to Kessler, I'm like, what are we doing here? But we're always looking for space and, you know, this, even if, if, even if it would be utilized for something other than what it is now, that would be a, a positive for us because we don't, we just don't have enough space, I think, when it comes to this. And, and I don't think it owes us anything, this building for sure. And if the roof is the last thing, Justin, then I say we got ourselves a pretty good building that we can use for quite some time without realizing that we got to go out and find something else. Cause you know how that is. That's a, that's a mess. But yeah, the last time I was in Kessler, I kind of agreed, Dick, but then they, they, they utilized it for some other things. So, you know, we'll, we'll see what, we'll see what happens. If C C P S moves out of it, then we've got more space. So I'll leave it at that.
Correct. And plus the roof will add value to the, to the building also commissioners. Like I say, the roof is in dire need of replacement. So hopefully we, you know, if that's the way that county would go, we would get these funds back.
All right, any other questions for Justin or Maureen?
I'll make the motion. The Board of Commissioners award this project to Garland D B S Incorporated in amount of six hundred and eighty-eight thousand fifty-five dollars for the roof replacement and restoration at the Kessler Building.
Second.
All right, anything else? All those in favor? Once again unanimously approved. Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Maureen.
Have a great day.
All right, next on our agenda. We visited this a week ago and wanted to get some clarification on a few additional details. And it is the GenTech Clearance Digital Evidence Management System that we were, that we were going to go after with some of our COVID funds. And I believe the questions that existed were as a result of this not being just one time, but recurring costs that are associated with this project. So Vicki, I see you on here. I guess I'll turn it over to you. I thought I saw the sheriff, but he might be on here too, maybe. But anyway, Vicki, you want to give us, or maybe Deb, I don't know, why don't, why doesn't somebody give us a, remind us of, of what the project is and then we'll try to address those questions.
Sure. Good morning commissioners. Yes, we are back before you after coming initially to you last week. The digital evidence management software is basically a cloud-based system that we are looking to, to move multiple videos, pictures, other kinds of digital evidence from various locations on the county's network and servers, putting it into cloud-based storage. As we explained initially, the benefits cover various areas. There are software that for individual applications wouldn't have to be renewed anymore. There are supplies that we would not have to purchase nearly as many of. And then also regarding the network and the storage, we would be able to free up space so that that space could be reallocated to other agencies in the county. Initially, we had a one-year contract. So you had requested us to go back to the vendor to see if we could get anything extended out. We were able to do that. So the numbers that we have here listed, the proposed cost is for a three-year contract. It is discounted. It includes the migration and then the ongoing operating cost for three years for a total of a hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty cents. I did speak with Debbie Stanford earlier in the week, Sixton and I both did to let her know as soon as we received the updated contract so that they were aware and that the committee was aware. It does, it does show an eleven and a half percent discount for the three years for the ongoing cost. So I know that was also Commissioner Lance, one of the questions you would ask for us to go back to the vendor to see if we could get anything discounted and then longer term. So it is a three-year proposal. The operating ongoing costs are discounted at eleven and a half percent. Debbie, did you want to add anything from your end?
I think I talked about this last week commissioners. We have been looking at these on a case-by-case basis. And if it follows our normal procurement of a software product, if, if we're receiving a discount for a longer term and it follows our normal procurement, then it is allowed under CARES Act. So the, the committee was comfortable with this purchase for a longer term.
So this then takes us through twenty, twenty-four or five, four, five?
I think halfway into twenty twenty-four, sir.
Okay.
Just one question. Actually, everything sounds great. And I appreciate all the, the work you did in getting us to where we are today. Does this software provide better accessibility to that information above and beyond just the storage and what, I mean, we didn't talk about it, the accessibility.
So it does several things. It addresses the security because it's out on a secure cloud system. It also increases efficiency with sharing that information for cases with state's attorney's office, with other jurisdictions that maybe we have a joint case with. And, and you aren't managing all of that in all these different areas. So it, it does all of that. It's, it's kind of a broad category, but it helps with efficiency. It does help with all of that. It's all in one place. It's all secure, relieves pressure off the network, all of that. Yes, sir.
Do other agencies have to have the same proprietary software or can it be shared?
It can be, sir.
Okay, awesome. Thanks.
As I say, I, this is a much better package than it was a week ago. And I appreciate the work going into that. But I also have to say, so I had the same objection I had a week ago because of the ongoing cost. What are we comparing these costs against during budget session? We have no idea. And in five, in three years or four years, what's our budget look like? Not that great. So I mean, that's my objection to this. I, I, I think it's a good idea. I said it last time. I thought it was a good idea. It's even a better idea now because of the three-year cost and, and, and the discount and everything else. And it is. Except this is not the budget season and we're bringing this up. And I, I thought as a board, we agreed not to do stuff like this outside of budget season. But I mean, that's my objection. I'll let it go there. You've all heard it before.
So my only rebuttal to that would be ordinarily, if this was a, was not COVID relief funding, I would be in agreement with you, but it is. And it's been identified that we can upgrade this by using COVID relief funding as opposed to them coming to us in March and asking for all this money within our budget. And I think that far outweighs the ability to upgrade this system, the fact that we are using relief funding for this. Sixten, the only thing that I would have, and I, I don't, I'm not cutting you off Dennis, but that's just, before I ask Sixten, that's, that's my, that's my rebuttal to, to your thoughts. That's all.
I understand exactly. And, and it's, it looks so good. I mean, it does. And the hundred and thirty-five thousand is going to be paid by COVID money. I get all that. That's fantastic. This is a good system. I think it's going to upgrade what we have now. There's no doubt about any of that. My thought is just that after three years, it's, it's an ongoing cost to us. It's just my thought. I understand where you all are. We'll move forward.
I, I, I tell you, I appreciate it. You know, you feel like it's kicking the can down the road. And we're not buying by a process that we said we were going to, but I think the risk outweighs the, the can itself kicking down. I mean, I, I think there's just a value that we want to take, you know, from the the, the can itself kicking down. I mean, I, I think there's just a value that we want to take, you know, from the, the COVID money. But I definitely appreciate what you're saying. I just think that the, you know, the risk is not there as much as what the value is in getting this.
Sixton, my question to you would be, no physical, um, additions to your area, uh, will, will occur as a result of upgrading to this, uh, to this system. Is that correct?
That's correct. This is a cloud-hosted solution, um, so it's not going to occupy any space internally to our, our building, any of our internal systems.
Okay, uh, I'm going to make the motion that we approve the purchase of the Gen, uh, Genetech Clearance Digital Evidence Management Software from Marathon Technology Solutions Incorporated. And in the proposed cost of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty cents. And I think this again makes a lot more sense, uh, with the fact that we've been able to get that three-year contract instead of just annually at, uh, and this, this is huge for, um, for our law enforcement partners, uh, moving forward here, so I'd take that out of the motion, that's just. Okay, any other questions or thoughts on this? All those in favor? Okay, and opposed? All right, it passes four to one. Uh, thank you, uh, Vicky for doing the additional legwork and Deb for assisting with that. Thank you, Sixton.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on, uh, we now come to the, uh, long-term approval to administer the long-term housing, uh, for persons with AIDS program on behalf of the Carroll County Health Department. And I will turn this discussion over to our Director of Citizen Services, Celine Steckel.
Morning Commissioners. Um, I wanted to introduce our partners that we are here with today from the Health Department. Um, we have Ed Singer, our Health Officer. We have Cindy Bosley joining us, the Director of Nursing with the Health Department. Uh, we also have Lily Rebert, the HIV Program Supervisor with the Health Department. Also Shannon Barnes, the Chief Financial Officer with the Carroll County Health Department. Um, and also we have our staff Danielle Yates, our Bureau Chief for Housing and Community Connections. So, good morning. As you said, we are here today seeking approval, um, to administer the long-term housing component of the housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, otherwise known as the HOPWA program. This program is a formula entitlement program issued by the Department of Housing and Urban Development with a short-term rental assistance program that is currently administered by Carroll County's Health Department. The funding makes it possible for persons that are living with AIDS and HIV to access housing and be stable in that housing because there's wraparound support services provided by this program as well. Lily, if you want to turn your camera on, I'd like to turn it over to you to give some information on the program as you administer it with the, the short-term rental assistance, um, and the support services for folks that are in the HOPWA program currently.
Hi, good morning. Um, I am not that photogenic. Can y'all hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, excellent. So right now we care for approximately twenty to twenty-five families with people living with HIV in our community. Out of these folks, approximately four to six of them meet the criteria for tenant-based rental assistance. And as she said, this is assistance for low-income households who need assistance in paying their rent and also with some wraparound services that also provides for utility assistance. It's an excellent program. We do not have tenant base currently in Carroll County. We're one of the few counties that do not offer this type of assistance. Um, we currently do offer short-term rental, um, utility and mortgage assistance, um, and that's just a, a very limited, um, housing assistance program. So we have seen tenant base to be excellent in other communities, um, within Maryland. And we would definitely like to offer these services to our citizens as well.
Thank you, Lily. And so the, the other component, um, that we're looking to offer from our perspective is because as the Public Housing Authority, our Bureau of, uh, Housing and Community Connections would be able to provide the support with our Housing Choice voucher program. And that was, that is where we would come in on that piece of the puzzle and many other jurisdictions already have this program and that side of it sitting within their public housing authority. Um, and that is why we have been working for, for almost over a year with the Health Department on this option and how we could help to support that. I'm going to turn it over to Danielle to talk about how that would fit within our structure that we currently have with our Public Housing Authority.
So, good afternoon. So as Celine had noted, um, many public housing authorities do administer the HOPWA tenant-based rental assistance program in their jurisdictions. Um, we have actually been corresponding with Baltimore City closely because they currently do offer this assistance to their jurisdiction to make sure that we would be able to provide the appropriate assistance needed to administer the program. The tenant-based rental assistance program through HOPWA, their programs, actually the eligibility and determination of assistance through the HOPWA program is identical to how our housing authority makes that determination as well. So in order for us to administer the program, um, there would be actually new, um, different training transition. It, it's purely what we do already. Um, as noted, with the funding that would be provided through the Health Department, we will be able to support approximately six to seven families annually. Um, and the expectation would also be that eventually these families that are being helped with the HOPWA funding would migrate over to one of our regular housing choice vouchers, freeing up more space on the HOPWA program, um, for additional, um, individuals that Lily and her staff may identify. Is there any other questions that we can answer for you in regards to the program and how it's administered?
I, I applaud the effort focused on HIV AIDS. Are there other efforts that were calling out other conditions, um, beyond HIV and AIDS, uh, for those that may need housing? I don't know what they would be, uh, off the top of my head, but you know, we've, we've come a long ways, uh, with this for many years. Why, why are we calling this out on its own? I don't know, Ed, you have a answer?
Yeah, I just want to chime in, Commissioner, and the reason we're calling this out on its own is because there, there is specific funding related to HIV, this, this HOPWA, which is the housing, uh, for, for people with AIDS is, there, there's also some other Ryan White funding and, and specific funding that has to do with HIV and AIDS. And, and, and the, it, it just has to, happens to be that, uh, you know, we're taking advantage of this program and the money that's available through, through the, uh, through the federal government that, uh, passes through, um, it ultimately passes through associated black charities down in Baltimore to the Health Department. And, um, we're just trying to integrate it in with the housing program. We've, we've had this program in, in place for, for, uh, for years because the funding is available for, for, uh, for our citizens and we want to take advantage of that. It, it's, it's not specifically available for other diseases. That's why it's only for, for specifically for AIDS and HIV.
Yeah, okay, I, I'm all for it. I'm all for, uh, you know, taking free money, taking care of our community. I'm just curious because there's other, you know, concerns out there that funding may be necessary. I'm just was wondering how it funneled in, so it was explained well. Thanks, Ed.
Okay, and again, just to review the budget for this program, um, the housing subsidy payments would be, um, fifty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars. The administrative cost would be three thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars for a total budget of fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars. And there would be no required county match with this program.
That last part's the best to me, so I'll move that to board. Commissioners approve the administration of the long-term HOPWA Housing Assistance Program on behalf of the Carroll County Health Department.
Second, any other questions or comments? All those in favor? I was waiting on Weaver. Okay, unanimously approved. Uh, thank you, Celine and Danielle, and of course, all of the folks that are on here from the Health Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next on our agenda is request a waiver of fees for the proposed new Hampstead Volunteer Fire Company. And for that, I'll turn it over to our Director of Land and Resource Management, Tom Devilbeast. Tom, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, I'm here today as the result of an inquiry made to the county regarding the potential for waiving of both, uh, review fees, building permit fees and the associated bonding that may be, uh, come about as a result of the construction of a new Hampstead Volunteer Fire Company station. In the past, uh, we have, uh, done this process, the last time being in two thousand and eleven for the Sykesville Fire Company, uh, where a waiver was granted from the review fees and the bonding for that expansion that they did in two thousand and eleven. So we don't have a standard policy regarding fire companies or anybody else for that matter. Uh, but what our code does say is we will, you know, administer fees, which we've had a very lengthy discussion about that, you know, earlier this year. So, the, uh, fee amount at this point in time, which has been invoiced but not paid by the fire company is ten thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. The associated other fees, really, we can't determine yet because we haven't gotten a plan or looked at it, so we don't know the level of the bonding or other fees that may be incorporated, uh, as we move through the process. So today, I'm here before you for a discussion and potential decision from you all regarding the waiving of those, all those fees and the associated bonding that may be related to that project. Do you have any questions?
If, if I may, uh, you know, I, I did get a call from Hampstead Volunteers, uh, originally on this, uh, project that they're starting. And, you know, we evaluate what the fire departments are doing. We give CCVs some money to distribute to the fire departments. And they work hard with all their activities, um, you know, trying to raise funds to keep things going in the companies. And, you know, here again, we're charging them for, uh, the plans and things like that, for them to go out and help us in the community doing what we, we, uh, haven't been doing here, the volunteers have all been doing. This is still a very cheap way of, um, getting, uh, the, the services we need with fire and EMS service. And I know I'm preaching to the choir with, uh, this group, but you know, it, it makes sense. They're working with us and with the, uh, now the new Carroll County Fire and EMS Service, uh, coming onboard, uh, we have to work together with our volunteers and as they are expanding and working to help us in the county. I think it's only fair that we don't charge for, um, these fees to them to, they're still working hard to just get the money to keep it all going. Why should they be paying us additional, uh, at this point?
So I'm, I'm in complete agreement with you, Dick. Uh, Tim Burke is on here. Tim, if we made, instead of a case-by-case basis, as we typically have done in the past, if we did, uh, some sort of an ordinance, I guess it would have to be an ordinance, uh, moving forward where we would say that any associated fees with our volunteer fire companies would be waived, period? Instead of case-by-case, uh, would that have to be the, the, the typical public hearing, blah, blah, blah stuff we got to go through?
Yes, right now it currently reads that, that you will be, uh, charging fees, period, uh, for, for these services. If you want to exempt any entity, we, we should specify that in ordinance.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm, go ahead, Ed. Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, I, no, it's, it's simple. I, I don't know much about the blah, blah, blah piece, but I think, uh, if we do the case-by-case, uh, we'll continue to be effective and efficient in getting it done. You, you know, and there's precedents already being set, so there's a comfort level to do it case-by-case, but, I mean, I, I don't think it's necessary to, to create another, uh, ordinance in, in, in this matter.
So I disagree. I think there is, uh, a case because we do it every time. We, we, we do, we, we, we do this on a case-by-case basis and we waive them every time. So I'm not sure I, it would alleviate coming back here each time if we had, uh, if we had it in place for our volunteer fire companies, um, that ability, to, to cover this so that it wouldn't have to come back before us each time. That, I know we can't do that today. I understand that. Today, we would be continuing to do the Hampstead thing and that's what it is, but I, I think what Commissioner Weaver and I are both saying is, I, I'd like to introduce, we would like to introduce, uh, at some point, to alleviate having to do case-by-case. I can't imagine this board or any board moving forward wanting to get money from the volunteer fire companies that we give to them and then asking them to give it back to us when they're doing whatever it is that they're doing.
Do you think it would open up the aperture for, uh, others to be a part of this?
Based upon, based upon the amount of funding that we provide to our volunteer fire companies and the level of responsibility that they have to our citizens, my answer to that would be no.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioners, if I could.
I, I agree with Commissioner Wainsell on this. I can't believe I'm saying, can't believe I'm saying that, but we do have to look out for the volunteers and what they're doing. They're all hardworking out there. This, look at this in the future, but today I want to get back to this individual that we're going to have to deal with, uh, individually today. And I move the Carroll County Board of Commissioners waive and review the building, uh, permit, uh, fees and county, uh, related bonding for the proposed Hampstead Volunteer Fire Department Station.
Second.
All right, on today's, uh, today's agenda item, we have a motion and second. Are there any other questions? All those in favor? unanimously approved. Uh, Tom, so you've got that and I, I would like to, uh, along with Commissioner Weaver, uh, ask that staff work on whenever you get a chance. I know we're all busy. Uh, some language, uh, or ordinance, if you will, to waive, uh, fees in the future for our volunteer fire companies. And we'll have to put down, I guess, specifics because I know that there have been landfill fees and other things that occur with these, with these, uh, fourteen, but I, I'd kind of like us to, to move in that direction if we get a chance, so.
Commissioners, if I could, uh, I just want to make sure it's clear because there are other fees that are associated with other entities that, that we review from time to time. Uh, and we always have an issue with, with this discussion internally at, at the least. So I want to just make sure that when we're working on this, that the fire companies are the only entities that you want to, to consider this for because we have other ones that, uh, now we don't do it for county projects, obviously, and we, we also, um, the date have not done it for, we don't do it for school board projects, charge fees. So there's other things, you know, allied agencies that, you know, we should, we could consider for this, this consideration. But I just want to make sure we're clear so that when we come back, you know, we're not having to duplicate some efforts.
I, I, I just want to emphasize, I, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Wainsell on this, but I would like to see some sort of report from the Budget Office historically in the past, how much revenue this was and into the future, how would it affect us to try to put it in perspective. So when we do have that hearing, I really would like to see some financial data on this.
Yeah, that, that's fine. I, I don't have a problem with that. That, we can, we can look to see what precedence has been set in, in whatever. I don't think we have to go back too far, but we can go back and, and, and look at some of those things, but hey, I'll put my neck on the line here. I, I, while I do appreciate all that everyone brings to the table, that, that, what, what, what is brought to the table by our volunteer fire companies, I believe is unlike anything else. So, uh, that's something that we can certainly hear and I'm sure we will, uh, at a hearing. Uh, but, but. Uh, but, but I, I, that's where I am with it.
I, I, I would think all of the other agencies would be case-by-case at this point. And yeah, you know, unless, Tom, you come up with a better solution for this, I would think, you know, we specifically make this for the, uh, volunteer fire departments. And anything else, I, I think we would probably have case-by-case. I can't think of anything right now that would come up. I'm sure they will. There'll always be something. So, um, just my thoughts on it.
Well, I think the request that Commissioner Boucher just gave will help us identify that, uh, to, to see what precedence has been set with other organizations, uh, previously. Uh, so, but I think we know what the emphasis is here moving forward. So anything else on this subject? We did vote, didn't we? Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay. You always vote again.
Okay.
Okay. We'll be back to you.
Right, thank you, Commissioners. All right, uh, request approval to sell parcel E within the subdivision of Pine Brook Farm Two, Section Three. Whew, man, that's complicated. I challenge any of the four, the rest of the four of you to go out and find this right now. Uh, anyway, Mr. Castengue, our Director of Public Works, everybody, you and good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Uh, everybody hear me okay?
Yep, we got you.
Got to conference kit and other computer in order to get on with you here today. All right, um, so welcome. Um, we had a request from a developer, um, that would like to, uh, develop, um, two parcels or a couple parcels, um, and this would be off of Pine Brook Farm, Pine, Pine Brook Farm Two, Section Three subdivision. Um, back when that was, uh, constructed, uh, there was point four-two-one-nine acres of land, which is also called Lot or Parcel E, uh, which was for a future roadway that was deeded to the county. Uh, we do not have a, um, need, uh, as its developers come in to ask for, um, the use of that land. Uh, we do not have a planned future road, uh, or need. Um, the one person that's asked for this, uh, parcel has, uh, is only going to use this as a private drive. So there's no need for the county to, uh, continue to hold on to this parcel nor, uh, maintain it. Um, so at this point, we're requesting the Board of Commissioners to, um, if we could put this on for a public surplus sale. Uh, that's the process we have to go to, uh, at this point to relinquish that property. Uh, I will put this up as close as I can to the screen. Um, so they're in pink, you'll see that's Maryland ninety-seven. Um, and then there's Pine, Piney View Fort. And there's a green.
That's pretty high-tech.
You got it, eh? You make it right.
It weren't.
As you'll see, there we go, Van Nuys this right here. That's, that's the access road in Lot E that was provided.
Hey Jeff?
So unless anybody has other questions with this lot, well, we do request, uh, Board of Commissioners to, uh, allow us to, put this lot out for, uh, on public surplus and, uh, sell that lot, uh, after it goes out for a bid.
So is this available to the entire public when you put it out?
Yes.
Or is it to the individual?
Nope, it goes out to the entire public.
Right, okay.
What part of the county this, is this in? I, your map is fantastic and all, but what part of county?
District is it in?
I believe this is Commissioner Boucher's prop, uh, area.
Yes.
Well, since I'm so impressed with your PowerPoint, I'll make the motion. I move that the Board of County Commissioners authorize the Department of Public Works permission to sell at public sale the land known as Parcel C within the subdivision of Pine Brook Farm Two, Section Three.
E.
Partial E, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and second. Hey, since we're gonna probably have some budget, uh, uh, challenges coming up, can we start the bidding at about three-point-five million?
Yeah, it might be on the market for a while, but we can give it a shot.
Okay. All right, take that part out of the motion. All right, okay. Uh, I've got a motion and second to, uh, get Parcel E on public sale. Any other questions? All those in favor? Unanimously approved. Thank you, Jeff, on that one. And you also have the next one, which is transfer East Middle School Miller Farm Athletic Field to the Carroll County Board of Education.
Yes. So, yes, uh, so thank you, Commissioners. Uh, yeah, this is a parcel of land. Um, if you're familiar with the East Middle School property, uh, this is where the current, uh, track, um, track is located. Uh, the Board of Education, through some discussions, discussions with them, um, they need to push the building back and stormwater management as far back on that property as possible. Um, if history from what I, you know, what I know so far is this property was at one time, um, was a, supposed to be a future site for a Board of Education building, uh, for their administrative buildings, um, many moons ago. Um, but, uh, that has, uh, since gone away. Um, so in order for the, uh, Board of Ed to capitalize or maximize their use of that site, um, they need to use some of our, they'd like to have that piece of property, uh, which is under, right now under the county's ownership, but the Board of Education's been maintaining for all, for many years. Uh, so they can push the building back and stormwater management. So the remainder part of the property, including where the current school is, can be, uh, maximized for field, for future field, uh, athletic field use. So we'd like your permission to, just to transfer that over. I can Van Nuys this again. Um, that is the parcel comes up the center street here at the, uh, see, there we go. There's center street right there, in our parking lot, and it goes across and it's right up against the stream, uh, which backs up the current, now new CVS and, um, plaza that we have. Yeah, apologize about the rudimentary part of this, but that's what you get when I borrow somebody else's computer.
I'm impressed.
You definitely have to improve your, your technology here, Jeff.
He basked it, but trying to save money. So basically I just, uh, keep shaking it like an Etch A Sketch.
Were you out in a parking lot casting away or what are you doing?
Actually Doug Brown's in the hallway now, just waiting for me to, it's his office.
Okay. All right, questions on this particular piece of-
Um, I'll move that the-
Go Dick. Go ahead, Weaver.
Uh, move that the Board of County Commissioners authorize the Department of Public Works to transfer ownership of the property at the East Middle School campus to the Carroll County Board of Education.
Second. So is it a technicality or what? Wouldn't we be giving it to Carroll County Public Schools? Why are we giving it to the Board of Ed? Is that just a, a process thing there or what? Curious.
Um, I'd, go ahead, Roberta.
That, that's the proper name of Carroll County Public Schools.
Oh, okay, sorry.
It's the proper name of what?
The Board of Education is Carroll County Public School. The, the one and the same.
That's interesting.
It's not, yeah, you're not giving it like to the individuals that are, hold the office of education. But, yeah.
Okay, I'm not sure I understand all that, but whatever. Um, okay. All right, just the technicality. I was just curious there. All right, any other questions on this one? All those in favor? And that's unanimously approved. Somebody did second that, right? Frazier did? Okay. Did you second it, Pre? Yeah, okay, okay. All right, then it's legit. All right, unanimously approved. Thanks, Jeff. Uh, good luck in the parking lot.
Will do, thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, that's the, that gets us to the end of our scheduled agenda items and gets us to open admin. I don't see any public comment. Chris Swam, is that correct?
None that I can see currently.
Thank you, sir. So I'll, before I go into agendas, I'll open it up. I'll open up, open. All right, let's go into agendas. For the week of November the second, uh, Tuesday the third, uh, we have a planning work session at nine AM. Wednesday the fourth, the Aging and Disabilities Commission meets at ten AM. Commissioner Rothstein, uh, will be on that, that's virtual. And then at six PM is a Planning and Zoning Commission work session, and that's virtual with Commissioner Rothstein. Thursday the fifth, uh, we go into our open session. Obviously, we start out with COVID. We've got a Justice Assistant Grant. We've got an Emergency Solutions Grant. We've got some ag easements or one act, well, no, we've got a bunch of ag easements. Uh, we've got a Stormwater Management Facility Restoration, uh, agenda item. Samsung Tablets for Citizen Services. We're gonna get a budget update on the first quarter from, uh, uh, our Director of Management and Budget. And, um, there, there's a couple more items coming on the fifth, right? We don't have them on here yet, Roberta.
Oh, no, there's several more, um, at least three or four more, and, um, we're going to, as a result, have an afternoon session. So what, what we're going to do is move the, um, ag easements, um, to the afternoon, one block, and, uh, we'll add other things to the morning.
Yeah, 'cause there's, we're, we're gonna have, uh, we, we've identified that we're gonna have probably some lengthy discussions on a few of those agenda items. So the easements will go into the afternoon and we'll readjust accordingly. Uh, Friday the sixth is a roundtable with Comptroller Francho, virtual, of course. Couple of us are, uh, on there to attend that at noon. And the seventh is the Vietnam Veteran Welcome Home Penning Ceremony. That's at Babylon Vault in New Windsor. That's at eleven AM on the seventh. Uh, Rothstein and Boucher attending that, and Weaver has the podcast.
Uh, excuse me, Commissioner, I think we're gonna have the honor of Lieutenant Governor Rutherford showing up on Saturday. Uh, Babylon Vault had contacted me about that, so it'd be a good opportunity for people to see Lieutenant Governor in the county.
Okay, that's good. All right, and we'll adjust the agenda items accordingly, uh, for, for that week, obviously. Uh, work in progress here on a lot of these agenda items as things get moved and pushed and what have you. The week of November the ninth, Transit Advisory Council meeting on Monday the ninth at three PM, and that's Commissioner Frazier. Tuesday the tenth, uh, we have another planning work session at nine AM. At, uh, one PM is, uh, the Transit Incident Management Conference, uh, and that's through the BMC. Uh, I'll be attending that and have been asked to, uh, give a keynote, if you will. So I'm honored to, to do that. Uh, that's, um, a, a good, that's, uh, a great event. I had, I had the opportunity to do that about four years ago, so it kinda focuses on public safety and road safety. Uh, okay, Wednesday the eleventh, the offices here will be closed, and that's in recognition of Veterans Day. There'll be quite a few ceremonies, I think, too, uh, leading up to, uh, that day. So we'll, we'll make sure that we push those out so that folks can attend those, uh, virtually or in person or what have you. Thursday the twelfth, we go back into open session. We'll again discuss, uh, COVID, which we always do. Uh, we've got some, um, some, uh, Department of Technology Services, uh, items. We have, um, some wildlife mitigation at Crimgold. That's interesting. I think we'll just take that off the agenda and give that to Boucher, Wildlife Mitigation. Let's just let him do, let's just let him handle that. So anyway. Uh, and we'll have other, uh, items on there as well. And it is Frazier Podcast Week that week. Obviously, more to come on those agendas as well. All right, any other items for open admin? All right, hearing none. Uh, we appreciate everyone's patience today. There was a lot. You know, it always seems like we get behind, but then at the end, we're always ahead. So I don't know what goes on there. Good, good. I think it may be good be attributed to the good management, meeting management skills. Anyway.
That's the difference between manager and leader. It's the same.
I knew when I opened that door that it wasn't good. I should have shut it right away. Bad move on, bad move, Wans. Okay. Uh, I'm gonna need a motion to go into closed for legal.
Make a motion, we go into closed for legal advice. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then I need a motion to close, uh, or to adjourn after that.
Motion to adjourn after the closed session. Second.
All those in favor? All right, a reminder, again, for those that are still with us, uh, we, we fall back in time on Sunday. Uh, that's gonna give another level of challenge to, uh, the public safety. Uh, a reminder that everyone remain vigilant as we watch across the count, or across the country and certainly overseas, we see the, um, challenging uptick uh, with, with positivity rates, which, um, man, we gotta keep an eye on here. Luckily, again, our citizens are, are, are very vigilant here, and we do appreciate that. As leaders of this county, I'll speak on behalf of my colleagues, we, we truly do appreciate that. So thank you to our citizens. With that, stay safe today. Little soggy out there, so, uh, be, be careful. Um, if you see our Director of Public Works, Castengue, in the parking lot with his computer, uh, run over there with an umbrella. And, uh, that's it. We're gonna go off the air. Everybody remain. We'll get the word, and then we'll stay on for closed.